Ready when you are, a GEP.
Thank you very much, Mayor. We have our devices rolling and the floor is yours.
Great. Thank you and good evening. This is the City of Morro Bay City Council meeting. It is a regular meeting. Today is Tuesday, April 26, 2022. It is 5:30 PM. We're meeting at the Veterans Hall for the second time in two years. Hooray. At 209 Surf Street in Morro Bay, California. With that, I will ask the clerk to establish a quorum, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Addis.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Heller.
Here.
Councilmember Barton.
Here.
And Mayor Heding.
Present. We do have a quorum. I'll call the meeting to order and just ask in your own way if we could take a moment of silence remembering those in need who are disenfranchised, maybe suppressed or oppressed and going through difficult times as we just stop and remember them. Thank you. And Councilmember Ford, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I'll ask our esteemed city attorney, do we have a closed session report? Mr. Newmeyer.
No closed session items to report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. That brings us to council member reports and our city manager report as well. A couple of things, I'll maybe start this evening. Everybody out there hear me okay? Not too close, not too fuzzy, great. Coming through loud and clear. Wanted to, since this is our second meeting back in, gosh, just over two years, very briefly review the best practices for civility and civil discourse for the city council and our community. This applies both to your city council members as well as those that are participating in the meeting. It's part of our handbook that will be re-reviewed tonight, but it is an existing ordinance, 0719, and I thought I would just review those with you this evening. It says, whereas the mayor, city council members, commissioners, appointees, and staff of Morro Bay in order to ensure civility and civil discourse in all of our meetings reaffirm and pledge our commitment to the following best practices of civility and civil discourse, we pledge the following: a commitment to listen first, making an honest effort to understand views and reasoning of others by listening to, to understand, not listening to find fault, allowing thoughtful discussion to lead to the best possible outcomes. And also, we pledge our commitment to show courtesy by treating all colleagues, staff, and members of the public in a professional and courteous manner, whether in person, online, or in written communication, especially when we disagree. And we also commit to reaffirm different opinions by inviting and considering different perspectives, allowing space for ideas to be expressed, opposed, and clarified in a constructive manner. We pledge to avoid rhetoric and refrain from making slanderous, profane, or personal remarks intended to humiliate, malign, or question the motivation of those whose opinions are different from ours in all of our meetings. We also pledge a commitment to speak truthfully without accusation and avoid distortion in all of our meetings. And we pledge our commitment to debate the policy and not the individual or person focusing on the issue and not personalizing the debate or using other tactics that divert attention from the issue. We also pledge our commitment against violence and incivility in all of our, in all their forms, whether and wherever they occur in our meetings. And whereas we commit ourselves to build a civil-political community in which each person is respected and spirited, public and political debate is aimed at the betterment of the City of Morro Bay and its people and not the disparagement of those with whom we disagree. And that was passed most recently on the 22nd day of January 2019 as ordinance number 0719. We do review that every two years, and I just thought I would go over that. We commit that as your council to you, and we ask that our public engage in the same commitment to us as the city council. So thank you for allowing me to review that. My second announcement is I've received a number of emails, and thank you for that. Couple of phone calls as well as texts. I guess there are various ways to get ahold of us these days concerning the proposed project at 3300 Panorama, the development. There was a city meeting that was actually city staff, not a city council meeting, that was held for information, I believe, just over a week ago. A number of you have asked for quote-unquote "a special" meeting of the city council. What I want to say to you is that this is a parcel that is within the city limits proposed by a private individual for development. It is going through the usual routine process, which means it will be vetted by our city staff. That will take a number of months to do that, to make sure that it aligns with all of the zoning and other codes. And then it would go to the Planning Commission where the public would have a number of opportunities to provide input. There would be a formal public hearing. And after the Planning Commission reviewed the project, if it was their determination that they had a recommendation to send to the city council, it would come to the city council for consideration at that time. This process, according to staff, is probably going to take nine or 10 months. Is that correct, Mr. Graham? I want to make sure I state that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. That's correct.
Okay. About nine or 10 months. So there's really nothing that we should, as a city council, be debating at this time. We have no project before us. It would be inappropriate for us to call a special meeting to discuss it because, again, nothing has come through the Planning Commission and been recommended to us. However, I should let you know that our great staff is looking at putting together a meeting for the public. This is staff, not a city council meeting, that would go through all of the details of the process that would be used to vet this project so that our public would have multiple opportunities and know, one, when things might occur with regard to those opportunities, and, number two, how you can sign up to receive notifications of when meetings occur if you would like to do that. And so we want to make sure that you have every opportunity to do that. I did respond in email to those folks that contacted me or texted me, but just wanted to more broadly address that for our community. And lastly, we've had a number of public comments at our last meeting, which was great to have the public back and hear from a number of people and not be on Zoom as we have been for the last two years. And, you know, as a city council, we heard input regarding the wastewater treatment facility, a couple of 218 votes, one that occurred in 2015, another in 2018, wanting to understand a reconciliation of where, quote-unquote, "the money that has been collected" for the increases that occurred in those two years, three years apart, and what CPI or capital improvement projects are slated, what is the progress associated with those regarding water infrastructure, basically a complete review of our One Water Plan, tying that to funding, funding sources, where the money has been spent so that there's accountability and transparency for the community. We're planning to do that. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Collins. We're looking at either May the 25th or 26th? Did I get that right?
It's probably the 25th.
Probably the 25th. In a special meeting. In addition, we'll be looking at our Harbor Enterprise Fund. But I wanted to just throw that out there so that everybody knew that that'll be a very comprehensive special meeting that will concentrate and focus on getting those answers to you that I think are very important for you to have, that you've been asking for. So thank you for that. That ends my comments for this evening, and I'll turn to Councilmember Heller. Sir, do you have comments, sir?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, everybody. Nice to see a good crowd here tonight. I would like to recognize a remarkable resident here in Morro Bay. We have many. But I'd like to recognize a person who's lived here for a number of years, a very intelligent woman. She has a degree in mechanical engineering from UCSD. She has a master's degree in business. She comes to meetings regularly and voices her opinion. She is a remarkable resident, and she's challenged by multiple sclerosis. In spite of that, she comes to meetings and speaks as best she can. I'd like to recognize Don Beatty, who is just a remarkable resident. Hats off to you, Don. She didn't ask me to say that, as you can tell by looking at it. The other thing, I'd like to make a pitch for the Morro Bay Maritime Museum, which is one of the best free things in Morro Bay that families can enjoy. For those of you who don't know, two weeks after Pearl Harbor, an oil tanker was sunk off the coast of Cambria and is now sitting in 900 feet of water, six and a half miles off the coast. The Maritime Museum is fortunate enough to have the boat that rescued all 36 men from that disaster. It's just a great landmark, and we have four or five other boats that are equally interesting. I encourage you to, whenever you have visitors, come and swing by the Maritime Museum. It's really a well-done nonprofit. It's just very impressive. We are looking for volunteers. We're looking for a two-hour commitment per week. We'll train you, and it's great fun meeting people and learning about the boats. We have people from all over the world. This week, a couple of days ago, we had a six-person group from Russia, which was an interesting discussion having them there. We had a great conversation with them. So it's a great experience. I encourage you to contact the Morro Bay Maritime Museum and help us out if you can. Those are my announcements. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Heller or Councilmember Barton, please.
We mentioned the Panorama meeting earlier, and I was there and listening to many, many comments that people had, and I look forward to following this project along as it develops and as we have more in-depth information. I wanted to say a thank you to our fire department. There was a house fire right near the mayor's house, but also kind of in my neighborhood, and everyone flowed out and came and had a look at it, and I was very impressed with the quick action of the fire department. And I heard from a friend that they were still there in the morning, so that was a long, a long time to tend that. So anyway, thank you. Let's see. Oh, and Greg Qualick. I am appreciating my little container that's in my kitchen, and everybody can have one of these. If you just call the garbage company, they'll deliver it. But it's the thing that makes it possible to have eggshells and chicken bones and whatever else in your house, and it doesn't smell. So it's an amazing thing, and so now I'm following the rules. I've got the, I've got that extra container so that I can be right with it on the mixed, what are we calling those, mixed compostable stuff? Yeah. Organic waste. Thank you. So anyway, those are, those are my things. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Barton. You should know that that organic waste turns into alcohol after a period of two weeks, just FYI. Councilmember Addis, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to just repeat an announcement that was sent by staff not too long ago that the City of Morro Bay is accepting advisory body applications to fill some boards that still have vacancies, and the application submission deadline is Friday, May 13 at 5:00 PM. You can get information at the city clerk's advisory body webpage. And there's vacancies on the Citizens Oversight Finance Advisory Committee, of which I was a member a couple of years ago, on the Harbor Advisory Board, of which I'm the liaison, of the Public Works Advisory Board, and the Recreation and Perks Commission, which I was liaison to a while ago as well. So these are wonderful groups. We'd love your participation. And you can also call 805-772-6568 if you want more information or you're interested in applying, and we hope that you do.
Thank you for that. And Councilmember Ford, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have a few announcements. I'll start with Visit Slow Cal is seeking lodging investor candidates for, they have several open seats for their board of directors. They actually have three, two, at-large seats. Two of them are for vacation rentals, and one is for an RV park. And so they're, they're accepting applications now, and that ends, let's see here, the deadline for applications is Monday, August 22, and that term runs from September 21 of this year until June 30 of 2025. Again, this is board seats for the Slow Cal, their board of directors. And if you're interested, there's, there's actually quite a few really long websites that I could point you in the direction of, but instead I'll just, and Emily, I'm so sorry to do this to you, but I would love for you to email Emily@slowcal.com to inquire for more information if you're interested in that board. And my next announcement is I'm a part of the Eback Committee, and that, if you're not familiar with this group, it's the Estero Bay Alliance of Care, and it's a combination of Morro Bay organizations and citizens along with Los Sosos. And during our last meeting, there was some commentary and concern regarding fraudulent phone calls and emails and texts to our senior citizens, well, anyone really, but primarily targeted at our senior citizens, and the struggle for our community members to know what is real and what is not real, and how do they, how do they vet that? How do they know if they're, you know, they are losing money out of their account or something from Amazon was ordered out of their account, you know? And so it's a stressful situation to be put into. So I want to remind our community that there is a resource, if you dial 211 or if you go to 211slo.org, there are several organizations on there that you can contact or be directed to if you call that can help you with these sorts of questions, among other questions that you have regarding, you know, food and other, other resources. Another announcement that I have is this weekend, we have the kite festival. We're excited to have that back. That is going to be held Friday through Sunday, and it's located over by The Rock on the north side of the Morro Rock. So come on out and support that. It's, of course, free to come and enjoy and see the beautiful kites flying around, family-friendly. And I wanted to give you a heads up that I attended the, I'm the liaison for the Public Works Advisory Board, and I was really excited to attend their very first in-person meeting as well. It's great to see everyone when they're not on the little tiny screen in Zoom and staff as well. And I enjoyed learning more about the EV charging stations that they're looking to put into our city and some more in-depth information about the sewer line repair and also an upcoming project with Caltrans regarding the Highway 1 project, which is a pavement, pavement project and improvements that will be happening in the next few years. So, you know, if you ever get a chance to tune in to one of their meetings or attend, they're really informational and great to know what's happening around our city. And lastly, I will be hosting office hours this coming, gosh, what is it, Monday, from 10 to 11 AM at Top Dog, which is located, most of you probably know, but it's at 857 Main Street here in Morro Bay. So if you'd like to come and chat with me, you know, I'd love to hear your thoughts and aspirations and concerns and anything that you'd like to chat with a council member about. And I think that concludes my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Mr. Collins, our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. A few updates, and then I'm going to turn it over to Public Works Director Greg Qualick for a few more. As the mayor mentioned earlier in his remarks, we will be hosting the fiscal year 2022, '23 budget discussions on May 24 and May 25, times to be determined, but they will be held here. There's also going to be a parade for the Morro Bay High School Athletics and Football Team this Sunday, May 1. It's an 11:00 AM kickoff. The parade will start in the south end of the pedestrian bridge and course through town, through downtown, and eventually wind up at City Park. There's going to be a recognition event for, for the team and for the high school, beginning somewhere between 11:15, 11:30 at City Park, so we hope folks can come out for that. And then I'll turn it over to Greg Qualick, Public Works Director, for a few more announcements. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Three announcements. First, the city will be holding the, an Arbor Day event in Lila Kaiser Park. I know Councilmember Barton will be joining us to plant four Monterey Cypress trees at Lila Kaiser, one near the playground facilities, and three in the median in the parking lot. We're really excited about that. And we also have Morro Bay in Bloom and Morro Bay Beautiful helping to plant those trees with us. That'll be this Sunday at 10:00 AM. Public is welcome to come and help plant trees. If you want to participate in the physical planting, please bring some tools. Second, I just want to give everyone, including council and the mayor, an update on the sewer leak under the one near Cloisters. So as you know, on April 11, our staff discovered a sewer leak coming out of a storm drain that runs under Highway 1. And by the end of the day, we had that area cordoned off, contained, cleaned up, and with all sewer water completely diverted into temporary storage tanks that are regularly emptied by some petroleum trucks that we got on contract. Initial estimates said that that operation with the temporary storage tanks and trucks was somewhere around, estimated to be around $10,000 a day. We just threw out a rough number. We did get our first invoice, and there's some good news that it's looking like $4,600 a day, so it's less than half of the expected cost. That's a positive. The second invoice might come in a little higher because of the rain we experienced, I think it was last week. And so there may have, you know, there may have been a bigger operation to deal with that, but, but still, that's a, that's a piece of good news. The other good news with the project is we have a short-term fix where we are putting in an HDPE plastic pipe inserted into that existing force main. And so that was actually installed today. It's going to be completed tomorrow, and we'll be able to cease operation of that, that whole temporary system I just described and bring that force main back into operation. So that's a short-term solution. We'll be evaluating long-term solutions. We hope to have a long-term solution in place within a year, but we will see what, what the opportunities there will be. And then finally, I have an update on South Bay Boulevard. We are reopening South Bay Boulevard sometime on Friday. So Corolo has stated that pavement will happen, or paving will happen on Thursday. Cleanup will happen on Friday, and we'll have South Bay Boulevard reopened. So keep your eyes out. They're going to be striping, I think, and Paul's here from Corolo in case, oh, striping comes after, right? Okay. So we'll do that at a later time, but there will be some temporary striping. So if there's any more specific questions about that, we could have Paul come up, but those are my updates.
Thank you, Greg. And just to build on the, the great work of the utilities team to get out there and fix that leak or at least come up with a diversion, they sprung into action immediately. I'm really pleased with how, how well they were able to come up with a bypass option and then locate a short-term solution, a long-term solution. So kudos to your team for that. Also needs to be stated that the One Water Plan, which is sort of comprehensive look at our stormwater, water and sewer needs, which are extensive throughout our community, identified this pipe in question to be replaced in 2029, 2040 timeframe. So we had not anticipated that this leak would occur. So we just want to make sure that community understood that and that now the contamination made into the pond or the ocean or anything like that, it was contained on site. And again, that's thanks to the great work of the Utilities Division team. So, thanks.
Thank you, Greg and Scott, for that update. Appreciate it very much. And that brings us to our proclamations for this evening. We have a number of presentations, and first one up this evening is Melanie Anderson from Lumina Alliance. Melanie, if you want to come on up to the podium, we're going to read from here because we've got a lot of wires and stuff, so it would be difficult for us to get down there. So welcome this evening. We do have a proclamation. This is item A4 on the consent agenda, and I'm going to read it to you. It says, whereas Sexual Assault Action Month calls attention to the fact that sexual and intimate partner violence is widespread and imparts every person, impacts every person in Morro Bay, and whereas Rise and Stand Strong officially merged on July 1, 2021 to form Lumina Alliance, an agency that serves survivors of sexual and intimate partner violence throughout all of San Luis Obispo County, and whereas although progress has been made toward preventing and ending sexual violence and providing support to survivors and their families, important work remains to be done, and whereas there is a need to focus on the individualized needs of sexual violence survivors, and whereas the marginalization of certain groups in society, including undocumented individuals, transgender individuals, and those living with disabilities, increases their vulnerability to sexual violence, and whereas Lumina Alliance continues to provide a safe environment to those affected by sexual violence with crisis intervention, counseling, education, and legal services, as well as emergency safe housing with the help of dedicated volunteers and professionals, and whereas Lumina Alliances, Alliance has provided services to more than 1,874 people in the last year alone, including more than 8,027 collective nights provided for shelter clients and more than 6,461 therapy sessions. That's an amazing number of interventions in a one-year period. And whereas Lumina Alliance encourages the community to recognize our collective power to create a culture that simultaneously supports survivors and nurtures a world where everyone can live free from violence, and whereas the City of Morro Bay strongly supports the efforts of Lumina Alliance, how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence and how to help survivors connect with services. Now therefore be it resolved that City of Morro Bay City Council recognizes the important work done by sexual violence programs, and we do hereby proclaim the month of April to be National Sexual Assault Action Month. And thank you for all the great work that you, your organization, and all of its members do, and if you'd like to greet us with a few words, we would appreciate that greatly. Thank you.
So it's kind of fun to be back in my old stomping grounds. I'm actually third-generation Morro Bay resident. My grandmother and mother grew up here as well. So tonight, I'm here to represent Lumina Alliance. I'm a board member. I've been a volunteer for them for 12 years, but recently joined the board. And Lumina Alliance is a nonprofit organization that was created by the merger of Rise and Stand Strong in July of 2021. Our mission is to empower those impacted by sexual and intimate partner violence through innovative advocacy, healing, and prevention programs. During the month of April, we look to engage in conversation with our community to educate and dispel myths around sexual assault and to foster a culture that supports survivors. Like many of you, we are saddened to hear about the multiple sexual assaults that have been shared by dozens of survivors on local media recently. This only illustrates what we know to be true, that sexual assault is underreported and that it can take months, years, or even decades to disclose. April is dedicated to creating a community that not only condemns sexual violence of all kinds, but actively works to fight against it. Throughout the month, there are many opportunities for community members across the county to learn more about sexual violence and actions they can take to prevent it. Lumina Alliance and our sister agency, Cal Poly Safer, have planned a series of events, including a denim day, which is tomorrow, April 27, where we encourage our community to wear denim and to share photos on social media with a message of support for survivors. We also will be participating in Take Back the Night, a candlelight vigil on the Cal Poly campus on April 28. We invite you to join us for these events and take action during this important month. Please remember, if you or anyone you know is experiencing sexual or intimate partner violence and needs help, please call 805-545-8888 to speak to one of our confidential advocates. In closing, we are so grateful for the In closing, we are so grateful for this proclamation and the ongoing support of the Morro Bay City Council. On behalf of Lumina Alliance's Board of Directors, staff, and volunteers, we thank all of you for taking action this month to create our vision of a safe, thriving, and equitable community.
Lonnie, thank you. And could you give us that phone number one more time?
Sure.
Just wanted to make sure our audience gets it.
Yeah, so that's 805-545-8888.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your work, and congratulations.
Thanks. Have a great evening.
All righty. That brings us to consent item A5, which is another proclamation. This is the World War II Commemoration Week proclamation. I'd like to invite up to the podium Glenn Silaway, and I don't know, is Tom Wilmer here as well, Glenn? Come on up if you want to, gentlemen. Welcome. This is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Morro Bay. Whereas, in the months after the attack on Pearl Harbor, the advent of World War II dramatically and irrevocably transformed the county of San Luis Obispo and all of its population as the entire nation mobilized for war. Whereas Camp San Luis Obispo was activated by the Army in 1940, and during the war, the post served as a training base for 22,000 soldiers with nine combat divisions training there that deployed both to European and the Pacific Theaters of War, as well as 5,000 Marines. By war's end in 1945, over 140,000 soldiers had prepared for war at Camp San Luis Obispo. And whereas in Morro Bay, the U.S. Navy established a section-based headquarters controlling patrol craft and mounted beach patrols protecting the critical oil terminals at Port San Luis and Estero Bay, expanding it into the amphibious Training Base, Morro Bay, and the Baywood Park Training Area. Amphibious Training bases were utilized by the Navy, Marines, Army, and Coast Guard to prepare 60,000 troops for the island-hopping strategy employed in the Pacific Theater of the war. Whereas Camp Roberts in northern San Luis Obispo County began its mission in March of 1941 throughout World War II, Camp Roberts was the largest U.S. Army basic training installation in the nation. Over 436,000 troops were trained here, over 5% of the nation's entire army during the war. By 1944, this base reached its peak population of 45,000 troops, with thousands of these soldiers quartered in huge tent cities with a 750-bed hospital, churches, warehouses, PXs, and other support facilities, many of which continue in use today. Whereas, the last week of April 1942 held special significance in the history of each of the communities throughout the central coast because on April 30th, the nation began the enforcement of Executive Order 9066 throughout the county and in the cities of Aurora Grande and San Luis Obispo. In the Aurora Grande Valley alone, 211 Japanese-Americans were expelled from their homes and confined in internment camps for the duration of the conflict, including 25 of the 58 members of the Aurora Grande High School class of 1942, all of them citizens of the United States. Whereas, in April 1942, the first units of the 54th Coast Artillery Regiment began arriving in San Luis Obispo, deployed a battalion of eight 155-millimeter howitzers pointed out to sea and assigned to protect the critical oil terminals in the communities of Avila Beach, Shell Beach, and Morro Bay. These highly-trained black GIs took up their positions in barracks within a five-minute response time of their batteries, thereby tripling the county's black population. And whereas Filipino-Americans were also called to enlist throughout the central coast and first reported to Camp San Luis Obispo, these men responded in numbers far exceeding the recruitment goals of the U.S. Army, and ultimately formed two full regiments of volunteers who fought bravely throughout the Pacific, especially in the savage battles that liberated Manila in 1945, and played a key role in the transition of the Philippines to full independence during the occupation that followed. And whereas, the Veterans Memorial Building in San Luis Obispo and the Faces of Freedom Memorial in Atascadero provide a permanent monument to the memory of those who served in World War II, as well as each of the other conflicts in which our nation has been engaged. And whereas, it is appropriate that the residents of the central coast set aside the week of April, a week in April 22, to reflect upon that time, only 80 years ago, where our community and our nation came together as one people to fight the common enemy of the Third Reich and Japanese imperialism, a time when we entered a war that ended not only with military victory, but with the establishment of institutions that fostered a peaceful world order committed to human rights, democracy, and respect for national sovereignty, and the common aspirations of humanity. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Morro Bay does hereby proclaim the last week of April as World War II Commemoration Week, joining in the history Center of San Luis Obispo County, South County Historical Society, Historical Society of Morro Bay, Morro Bay Maritime Museum, and the Central Coast Veterans Memorial Museum, in making this week with free public events throughout the county to educate our citizens about the brave men and women who endured enormous sacrifices of their property, their liberty, and in many cases, their lives to achieve victory in World War II and kindle the hopes for a lasting peace. Interesting how history almost repeats itself again today, gentlemen. Thank you for being here, and we would love to hear from you this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Heding. I'm Glenn Silaway. I'm a resident in Morro Bay. My colleague, Tom Wilmer. And Council, thank you for your time tonight and for this proclamation. I actually have some more "whereas's" I could add to that.
It's a lot.
Yes, there are, including the Embarcadero that we live on every day. It was built by the Navy in 1942, '43. This week is called, the theme of it is Fighting the Enemy Overseas Facing Discrimination at Home. And of the eight or nine programs that are running throughout the week, several of them deal with both the black regiment that lived here in Morro Bay in part and ran the howitzers, and also the Japanese families who were interned, including our Nagano family from up the Morro Creek. So it's touched us closely here. World War II really shaped this county in a lot of ways. I want to just tell you about one event that's going to be here in Morro Bay tomorrow night at the Natural History Museum. It's free. It starts at 5:00, and it's going to feature a new display by Amy Hart of State Parks. She's a historian. Display of panels that describe World War II in Slow County. Then Cal Poly professor is going to describe a little bit about the context of the war for us. And then Stuart McDowell, who wrote the book, Sinking of the SS Montebello When World War II Came to the Central Coast, and thanks for the help on that, Councilmember Heller. I appreciate the lead-in. This, Stuart is going to be presenting from his own book, and he has a great deal of interesting detail about the Montebello. And you should go down and see the Alma, by the way, if you ever get a chance. It's right there, just south of the power plant at the Morro Bay Maritime Museum. So, Tom?
I just want to add that relative to the 54th artillery unit, they were bivouacked up in North Morro Bay at the old hotel because they were all-black regiment, 100% segregated. Nobody knew this. I've been here for years, and I'm a historian, never heard anything about them until one day I was interviewing Edith Ross and our Kredal. The Kredal family has this stone house in North Morro Bay. Their dad blew up Morro Rock during the war, mining the stuff. Anyway, Edith, in passing, says one day in the interview, she goes, "This black soldier came up on a horseback, and I started talking to him and whatnot." And that was the first time I heard about any African-American soldiers here. So, one day, I'm involved in the California State Guard, in the History Command, and Lieutenant Colonel Eric Bruin, who lives in North Morro Bay, is a, we're involved together in that project. He was with a friend of mine, a Navy vet, who brought up that incident with Edith Ross. And Lieutenant Colonel Bruin goes, "What?" And since that day, he has not slept. He has generated probably a half a foot of history material about them being stationed here. Their headquarters were at Morro Bay State Park, where the campground is, the old CCC camp. But anyway, it's just been an amazing unfolding of a history that nobody knew here in Morro Bay. So my hat is off to Edith Ross for bringing that up and Lieutenant Colonel Bruin for running and running with it. Anyway, thanks.
Sorry, I forgot one thing. You can get information about this whole week at the History Center of San Luis Obispo homepage. There's a nice little button that goes right to a lot of detail about where, when, and what. Eric Bruin gave his presentation on the 54th last night, but we will bring it here in the near future, and it'll be something good to see. Thanks.
Hey, thank you both for the great history lesson, and we appreciate all the work that you're doing. Our next proclamation is item A6, which is National Police Week proclamation. I'm going to invite up Chief Cox and any of the officers that might be here to support the chief this evening. Welcome to our great staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I'm going to ask all of the PD staff that is present to come up here, if they would.
Absolutely.
Maybe they didn't hear me in the back. All of the PD staff that is present.
This is an order.
And I thought that was important, Mayor, because really, it's the men and women, both on the front lines and behind the scenes, that are doing the day-to-day work in the department, and that's why I would like to have them up here.
Appreciate you all being here. Who's keeping the streets safe at this point in time, given the staff's all here this evening? I hope you have a few officers out there. This is a proclamation of the Morro Bay City Council. Whereas in 1962, President Kennedy established National Police Week, and whereas we are honored to observe National Police Week from May 15th through the 21st, 2022, and May 15th, 2022 is National Peace Officers' Memorial Day. Whereas, for generations, brave peace officers have answered the call to serve and protect our communities and our nation, often in dangerous and unpredictable circumstances, embodying courage, honor, and pride, and representing the best of the law enforcement profession. Whereas today, we recognize and honor the sacrifice of our fallen heroes, peace officers in California and nationally, who bravely and unselfishly gave their lives in the line of duty in the protection and service of others. And whereas the City of Morro Bay expresses our respect and appreciation for the bravery, service, and professionalism of the Morro Bay police officers and peace officers throughout the San Luis Obispo County and nationwide as they serve and protect us. Now therefore be it resolved that the Morro Bay City Council does hereby call upon all Morro Bay community members to observe and acknowledge this day, Sunday, May 15th, 2022, as Peace Officers' Memorial Day, and the week of May 15th through 21st, 2022, as National Police Week, in honor of our fallen police officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in the service of their communities. We recognize and pay respect to those heroes and their families. And I just personally want to recognize, Chief, you and your wonderful staff. We, as a community, are blessed to have the service of the officers and staff that serve us. Without a doubt, one of the finest forces in the state of California, if not the nation, in my opinion, and I'm biased, and I know that, but gosh darn it, I'm going to continue to be biased. I just want to say thank you for putting yourself in harm's way to keep us safe on a daily basis. Please know that this council appreciates and this community appreciates all of you greatly, not only for the service that you provide, but for your connection to our community. Thank you. And Chief, if you'd like to offer a few words.
Thank you. Let everybody witness a little bit of history right here. Gene, would you like to speak?
I'm on hiatus.
Okay, because we could never get him to be quiet, so. I've just given him a bad time. I just want to say, Mayor, Council, thank you, and thank you to Scott Collins, our city manager, for inspiring this proclamation. It's no secret that law enforcement's been taking a beating over the last couple of years. And I just want to say thank you to our council, and sir, it's us that are blessed to work in a community with this kind of support. We're very blessed to have the support of our council, of our city staff, and the other departments that we work with. We're very, it's a very unique situation, and I've worked in other agencies and in other places where this kind of relationship doesn't work. And relationship is the key to what we do in this community, and it's why I believe that we're successful as an organization and as an agency. So, on behalf of Morro Bay Police Department, we thank you. On behalf of the law enforcement profession, we thank you for your support of us as your police agency. So, thank you.
Thank you all. And let's see, we have A7 is our Morro Bay Transit 45th Anniversary Proclamation. Camille Watkins, if you want to come up to the podium. And welcome to you.
Welcome.
This is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Morro Bay. It reads, "Whereas the City of Morro Bay Council established a door-to-door general public transit system in Morro Bay known as Morro Bay Dial-A-Ride and began providing service on May 2nd, 1977. Whereas, Morro Bay Dial-A-Ride was established to provide local transit service to individuals who did not have access to or were unable to drive a car because of age, medical condition, economic circumstances, or personal choice. And whereas, due to state transit funding cuts in 2008 and 2009 resulting from the Great Recession, in 2010, Morro Bay Dial-A-Ride transitioned to a deviated fixed route and caller ride service. Morro Bay Transit continued providing local transit service to its residents and visitors. And whereas, Morro Bay Transit provided lifeline transport services for those in need that may have been economically impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic, offering free service for over 15 months while concurrently maintaining core service levels throughout increased interior vehicle cleaning frequency, promoting social distancing, limiting the number of riders in the bus, and at the same time, providing face masks and hand sanitizer to riders. And whereas, Morro Bay Transit has provided more than, this is amazing, 1,672,211 rides to Morro Bay residents and visitors in the 45 years since local transit service began operating. And whereas, the City Council of the City of Morro Bay acknowledges and appreciates the high quality of public transit service provided to Morro Bay residents and visitors by Morro Bay Transit contractors and their respective employees since inception in 1977. And whereas, Morro Bay Transit is an alternative to the single occupant vehicle for Morro Bay residents and visitors, and is an effective means to reduce fuel consumption, air pollution, traffic congestion, and parking requirements, as well as promote a cleaner, healthier environment, and better economic conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Morro Bay do hereby proclaim in honor of Morro Bay Transit's 45th anniversary, May 2nd through May 6th, 2022, to be Morro Bay Transit Week. Congratulations. Amazing. 1,672,211 rides. Camille, welcome and thank you.
Welcome. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, citizens of Morro Bay and the staff of the City of Morro Bay. We actually have a local passenger who has ridden the bus every day since its inception. His name is Matt Majors. Some of you probably know him. Right now, we have a driver who's still out on the road. We run until, we start in the morning at 6:25, and we stop at 6:45. We make this wonderful circle all through this wonderful town. And we're not just moving people around. We're also providing information to people about our town. We have people who visit, ride the transit buses, and of course, the trolley, my favorite. But, gosh, thank you so much. And again, everybody, ride the transit bus. We go all the way around, and we're not just for seniors or disabled or school kids. It's a great run, just to ride the It's a great run, just to ride the, just to ride the bus from the stop nearest your house, all around and look at the town. You get to see things that you probably don't even see, because you go from point A to point B on your own. I'm overwhelmed. Thank you so much, and I hope to be here for another 45 years.
Camille, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. And our final presentation tonight is a proclamation of appreciation for Tammy and Randy Ponder. And Randy, I think you're here. I saw you earlier. Come on up, sir. And do we have Tammy on the line? Is she calling in tonight? Think so? Okay, so if she can hear us, hopefully. Great. So this is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Morro Bay, expressing appreciation for the dedication and public service of Randy and Tammy Ponder. It says, whereas the City of Morro Bay is blessed to have residents, employees, and volunteers who generously offer their time and talents in support of city operations, activities, and events. Whereas Randy Ponder served as a volunteer for Morro Bay Police Department as chaplain since July of 2009. And Tammy Ponder worked at Morro Bay Police Department as the property and evidence technician from November 2011 through April of 2022. Whereas Randy and Tammy Ponder have served the community of Morro Bay through their ministry at Rock Harbor Christian Fellowship with a drive-through community food bank during the COVID pandemic from 2020 to 2022. And whereas Randy and Tammy Ponder were instrumental in Easter Sunday services at Morro Rock from 2011 to 2019, and Church in the Park in 2018. And whereas Randy Ponder conducted weekly ride-alongs with patrol officers to offer support to the officers in our community. And whereas Randy and Tammy Ponder opened their church to the community for a suicide prevention and awareness seminar in 2022, along with a 10-week grief recovery support group in 2021 and 2022. Whereas Randy and Tammy Ponder provide their support and comfort to the community in times of loss, and would be present with family members by listening, cleaning, sharing stories, and comfort during tough times. And whereas Randy and Tammy Ponder were leaders in the Morro Bay Police Department Peer Support Group, they were instrumental in creating a family environment at the Morro Bay Police Department, and giving many hours of dedicated service to all of the community events with Morro Bay Police Department. And whereas Tammy Ponder's organizational skills and abilities prove to be of the highest standards when during an extensive external audit of the Property and Evidence Division at Morro Bay Police Department, it was reported to the chief that this was the most organized evidence room that the company had ever audited. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Morro Bay City Council does hereby thank Randy and Tammy Ponder for their dedicated service of a combined 24 years to the City of Morro Bay and the Morro Bay Police Department, and offers its best wishes filled with happiness in your new journey. Randy, we appreciate you and Tammy so much, and we're excited to present this proclamation to you tonight. And please, we'd love to hear from you.
Well, thank you. It says three to four minutes. And anytime you give a preacher a mic, it will be a lot longer, so. No, I'm not sure what to say. Morro Bay is very special to Tammy and I. We met in 1983 at 420 Napa. A week later, on the Embarcadero, I asked her to marry me, and we're coming up on 38 years. So Tammy grew up here. I went to Cal Poly, lived here. Great, great community. I'm so blessed and honored with your magnanimous gesture, and it's going to be hard to move on, but thank you very much, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Randy. Appreciate it. Thank you, Tammy. Okay, that ends our proclamations for this evening and moves us to public comment. This is general public comment for any members of the public who wish to speak on any item regarding the city or for an item on the agenda for which you cannot stay and give public comment during that time. I'll start with the sheets that were filled out. No requirement to do that. It's nice to have that. I will use these first, and then I'll go to our folks in the audience that may want to speak. If you hear something that prompts you to do so, and then we'll have our folks that may be calling in by phone to give public comment as well. So, general public comment is now open, and let's see, my first speaker, Ed Griggs. Welcome, Ed.
I am Ed Griggs. I live at 539 Whitby Street. I've been there for 20 years, and I'm right across the street from the proposed developments at 3300 Panorama. I have lived across the street from 3300 Panorama for 20 years and was closely involved with the fuel tank demolition as a member of the Morro Bay stakeholders, and active in representing people impacted by the tank removal. On April 20, I attended the neighborhood meeting by RRM Consulting at the Del Mar Elementary School here in Morro Bay. Based on the history of the fuel tank removal and the resulting strong feelings expressed at the neighborhood meeting that took place April 20, we would like to bring the present City Council up to speed on the proposed 61 house development at 3300 Panorama. From the perspective of people closest to the proposed development, this is this in the form of a study session with all five members of the City, the Morro Bay City Council, and a few members of the people close to the project. I videotaped the meeting and transcribed the questions and asked at the meeting if you would like, if you would like, I can bring those questions to the study session or email them to you if the study session is approved by the council. RRM asked to submit questions, but people were pretty steamed up by then and hardly in a mood to write much. They were asked to write things on the back of these forms. If you wish to invite the Planning Development Department staff to attend, to attend to answer any questions about the process, I would encourage their attendance. In the past, the stakeholders' relations with the planning committee, commission staff has been strained, including the staff, including the staff might go a long way to improve relations between them going forward. Since most of the Morro Bay City Council was not sitting at the time, I believe that our helping you understand the nature of the sentiments of our neighborhood would be of mutual benefit to all involved. I also understand that according to RRM, it is early in the process. I also believe that the Morro 94 LLC, the entity that owns the property, is actively advancing their interests in developing the property. From the perspective of the neighbors and in the near proximity to the neighborhood, it is not too early to engage in a study session. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed. Next up for public comment is Linda Winters. Welcome, Linda.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. Linda Winters here, AKA Mobile Home Linda. And as I said at our first in-person meeting, I will be back, and here I am at number two. I spent the past 14 days working my volunteer jobs and shopping locally and running into lots of folks that shared their feelings, that totally unsolicited, of course, about attending city council meetings in person. 99.9% were in favor and applauded my efforts. There was one gentleman, though, who said he'd rather have a stick in his eye than attending council meetings. That's rather harsh, I think. So why do I come here? I've committed myself to be a representative for mobile home residents. But in order to be a representative, you need to be aware of the whole picture. How does that happen? Well, it's Basic Civics 101. Look at and read the council agenda and staff reports. This week's was only 196 pages, I believe it was. During the last meeting, we heard Chief Cox's wonderful detailed report on military weapons and Chief McCray's report on possible command post here in Morro Bay in case of emergencies. Both were excellent reports. They were both time-consuming efforts, but done for all of us. That's Civics 101. The last meeting I attended in the last 14-day period was the Morro Bay Historical Society's first in-person meeting in 25 months. There I met Franklin Riley, Morro Bay's founding father. He's aged quite well and is the reason why our eucalyptus trees and so much more are here in Morro Bay. Then a geologist that explained to us how the Morros were formed. And Patty Dunton, a tribal member of the Salinians, who told her story of the history here of her tribe celebrating their rituals at Morro Rocks for hundreds of years. We need to know where we came from, to know why we are here now. This is why I stayed through the whole meeting to learn as much as I can. But sometimes I feel like I'd rather have a stick in my eye than attend another meeting. But I overcome those feelings, and here I am now. That's my number two report, as I promised, and I'll be back next meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda. Appreciate that. Next up is Catherine Belt. Catherine, I think, I hope I got that right. Belt, is that correct? Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Belt, and I live in North Morro Bay. I would like to speak to you concerning the proposed development at 3300 Panorama. As I'm sure you're aware, there was a meeting held by the design firm at Del Mar School last week to discuss the 61 homes planned for this parcel. Many neighbors were in attendance to voice their opinions of the development. None present had anything good to say about this plan. I'd like to go through a few of the reasons why. Infrastructure. I believe we are all aware of the deteriorating infrastructure with constant potholes, very narrow streets, and no sidewalks. I'm not sure how builders can plan on using these streets without causing additional damage to an already failing area. The infrastructure improvements necessary to accommodate this level of planned development will likely exceed any increase in attack space. Water. Nobody can disagree with the fact that we are in a historic drought, and nobody knows if and when these conditions will abate. Yet the plan for 61 new homes with needs for drinking water, bathing, laundry, and landscaping. According to the printout sent by the City of Morro Bay, Governor Gavin Newsom has called on California to reduce the water usage by 15%. How does this gel with a new development with the possibility of an approximate 240 people using more water? The hillside. Those hills are known to be unstable. How can we place 61 new homes under an unstable hill? I have heard that this location is appropriate under current zoning regulations, but all I have mentioned needs to be recognized as serious detriments to going ahead with the plan as presented. Because it is allowed does not mean it is the right thing to do. Please recognize that citizens really need your support through this project, and I appreciate your listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Appreciate that. Next up for public comment is Margaret Carmen, is that correct? Margaret, welcome, Margaret.
Hello, everyone. I'm Dr. Margaret Carmen, and I happily and gratefully have lived in Morro Bay since March of 2020. Got to experience Morro Bay without people. I know, we're glad to all be back here, and thank you for having us in person. But while I was listening, and I want to say thank you for all you do, too. But while I was listening online, what I noticed compared to some other meetings I've listened to is it seems like there's not a lot of questions from the staff, from the council members, and the staff just keeps telling you what they want you to do. And as a voter and a citizen in Morro Bay, I voted you guys. And so I want you to ask more questions and not let staff tell you what to do. Which brings me to, I recently met James Costanz, and that's one of the first things he said. He's running for board, and he wants to have diversity of thought, and I want to encourage you guys to have diversity of thought. Okay, now my second thing. I want to thank the first responders very much, because I live on the corner of Estero and Anchor, a couple houses down from the house that caught on fire. And everybody was so quick and responded. But what was, I was painfully aware of with my own eyes of how there's a law in Morro Bay that you don't have sidewalks, and you're not supposed to put your landscaping all the way to the street. And my neighbor is a great man, but he loves to have a lot of landscaping, so there he is on the corner. And the fire truck can't get through, because he's extended his landscaping all the way to the corner, built a berm, and put up a little wall. So the fire truck had to stay where it was, because the, anyway, I just want to say, why do we have a law? And I wanted to put it, you know, out in the public, and it's on the record. Why do we have a law that says you don't put your landscaping out to the street and yet let everybody do it? All right. And then the other thing I want to say is, I know that it wasn't the electric car that caused the fire, but I want to bring up the point that I'm really against having a battery storage plant in Morro Bay and all the potential error, damage, and demolition that might happen. And I wasn't planning on saying this, but when I listened to meetings earlier in the year about the Coleman Park Plan, I mean, my family back east, so many people know about Morro Bay as a natural wonder. So why do we need to put a park in with a playground for kids to play on when they ought to be on the sand? That's what I want to say. And the Public Works people talked about having two house fires last summer, and it depleted the water storage tank by a half. So why do we want to add more houses to go up the hill? Okay, this is my first time to talk to you guys, so I'll stop now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Nicole Dorfman. Welcome, Nicole.
Hello, good evening. My name is Nicole Dorfman, and I am here tonight representing Children's Health Defense California Chapter as the ambassador for San Luis Obispo County. Founded by Robert F. Kennedy Jr., Children's Health Defense's mission is to end the current childhood health epidemics by working to expose causes, eliminate harmful exposures, hold those responsible accountable, and seek justice for those injured, and establish safeguards to prevent future harm. And I would like to invite council members and everybody else to join us for a screening of the Children's Health Defense film, Medical Racism: The New Apartheid, this Friday evening at 5:30 at the Community Center. Tickets are $5 at the door, but nobody will be turned away due to lack of funds. This documentary film exposes the corruption and systemic racism which pollutes the pharmaceutical industry as well as the American medical establishment. Most of us are familiar with the Tuskegee Syphilis Study, in which black men were used as guinea pigs for 40 years, which ended only when a whistleblower stepped forward in 1972. But few are aware of more recent and ongoing transgressions against black people, particularly poor black Africans, who service the subject for the world's pharmaceutical companies, often with tragic results. It's time to acknowledge that the elites in public health, the pharmaceutical industry, and the medical system have historically held little concern for the true health and well-being of black people in America and across the globe, and that circumstances are no different today. The practice of treating black communities as laboratories for testing blockbuster drugs and vaccines must be fully exposed and immediately halted. So please join us on Friday night for this groundbreaking film, which documents these abuses and calls on all of us to work for similar change in the medical industry that we are demanding from other sectors. You can contact me at slo.chd@protonmail.com with questions about You can contact me at slo.chd@protonmail.com with questions about the film or to connect with our local group. Again, the film is 5:30 Friday night at the Community Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Appreciate that. And next up for public comment is Kristin Hedlund. Welcome, Kristin.
Let's see. Hello, Mayor, City Council members and staff. I'm here to speak about the 3300 Panorama. I want to say that I am a part of the five-year process where the jet fuel tanks were. That was quite a bit of a job, and now we're moving forward for this subdivision. I support my two neighbors over here who gave their comments. This 10-acre parcel is a beautiful piece of land. There are many 40, 50, 60-year-old Monterey Cypress pines that live there, and some of them are slated to be just cut down, which I am not in favor of. We have a lot of wildlife that live within the area. We have these, right now, we have wild turkeys coming through the neighborhood. They live inside of that gated area. And so for me, I'm very concerned about what is going to go in there. It is sitting on a landslide zone that is documented and within the city of Moreau Bay and along with the state. We're concerned that if that hill gets cut into, we could have a landslide, and people's lives and properties will be affected. I'm very grateful that, Mayor, you said that there will be a study session for us because during the five-year process of the jet fuel tanks coming down, there's so much to learn, and the subdivision is like the first subdivision other than cloisters here in Moreau Bay. So I look forward to working with Scott Graham and staff to learn all the ins and outs of how you put together a subdivision, and I hope we can get that moving sooner rather than later, and thank you very much for your time. Have a good meeting.
Thank you, Kristin. Next up for public comment is Erica Crawford, our Chamber CEO. Welcome, Erica.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council, Erica with the Chamber. Just a very brief announcement tonight, and that is to invite the community to attend a candidate forum. That'll happen next Wednesday from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. right here at the Vets Hall. It's a forum for the two candidates who are running in the special municipal election this June for the one council seat. The forum is free, and it's open to all, and it will be moderated by the League of Women Voters. We are also encouraging the community to submit questions in advance. The forum moderator from the League will pose 10 questions to the candidates during the first hour, and then the last 30 minutes will be dedicated to sorting and posing questions submitted by forum attendees via index cards. Information on the forum, including the link to submit questions, is on morochamber.org. Further, we invited the candidates in this election to complete questionnaires for our members and for the general public to learn more about them. These questionnaires will remain on the Chamber's website through Election Day. These are kind of normal operating practice that we've been doing for the last few elections. And all of this can be found on the Chamber's website. Again, it's moreaubay.org, and it's on a little drop-down tab that's titled 2022 Special Municipal Election.
Erica, did you say the 4th of May, Wednesday, at 5:30, did you say?
That's correct. Right here at Vets Hall.
Right here at the Vets Hall?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Any members of the audience willing to speak? Public comment is still open? Anybody wishing to speak? Come on down. Well, let's have a race, all right? Welcome.
Hey there. My name's Kevin Hadley. I live in North Moreau Bay also, on Tahiti Street, my house is. It's a good neighborhood. I can walk to check the surf in the morning. I can walk to go surfing. At low tide, I can walk to North Point with my kids, look at the tide pools. After that, I can take my dogs for a walk on the beach in North Moreau Bay. We could also walk to Delmar Park. My daughter, when she was two years old, took an hour and a half to walk back from Delmar Park, but it was a huge victory for us. I think what bothers me most about the proposed development is the complete lack of consideration for the neighborhood. They have no interest in integrating with the neighborhood, but creating their own neighborhood. I'd like to propose that they reconsider the development to integrate with the neighborhood instead of becoming separate from the neighborhood and driving, we have multiple cars for each house, we have UPS trucks, we have gardeners, we have cleaners, we have DoorDash, and there's been no consideration given to the neighborhood that has no sidewalks, no stop signs, no speed bumps, no bike lanes. I think it would be much better if they took our neighborhood into consideration as well as their neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate it. Public comment still open? Betty, did I see you coming? Yes, welcome, Betty.
This is in regard to the bike path that no longer exists. I'm Betty Winholz, Moreau Bay, that exists behind the power plant and has been gone for, oh, many, many months and won't be done until the end of the year, is my understanding. I'm concerned because I'm not sure that what's going on down there is under the permit that we got from the Coastal Commission. Trees have been cut in the past where supposedly the conveyor belt, conveyor belt, conveyance system for the new piping is going, and yet now that's been expanded 75 feet wide, and they've gone in and cut more trees in the other areas. So where the original trees, could those have been saved? Could we have kept our bike path? I'm concerned that this is going on without proper vetting and proper, certainly no EIR because this property was not in existence, accessible to the city, when the EIR was done. So I'm raising the concern about no EIR. I'm raising the concern that we continue to cut trees without having seen a plan. I haven't seen a plan online. I don't know what's going on. So it's very, why we focus on the WRF site, that's one piece of this puzzle, but this is the conveyance system that will carry the sewage and the water back, and I'm concerned about that. And I guess it really hit me hard because the last few meetings, you have stressed being a tree city, that you're celebrating Arbor Day, and when you look at these pictures that I've passed out to the audience and to yourself, you'll see that this is not what a tree city does. The first picture that you saw there was actually a staging area back behind the 75-foot limit, and I'm sure that wasn't in part of the plan. The other two or trees, there was a huge, beautiful eucalyptus at the beginning of the south end of the bike path. For some reason, it was cut. I don't see it near any wires. I don't understand that. And then you'll see how the other tree was treated along the path with just no regard. So this, as you know, is very important to me, and it doesn't jive with our standards. And so I'm going to be looking to all of you, because I think four out of five of you will be running for office either next month or in June or in the fall. And I want to know where you stand on these issues and what you're doing, because I have not heard you even ask or inquire as to the devastation that's going along this path and why it's happening and how it's, I mean, I know that there's a kind of a plan to replant, but this whole way this has happened has not been planned. I mean, it's been, this is one thing, and then the next day, it's another thing. And so we lose trees here, and now we've lost trees there. And if you were to walk down there, which I'm wondering if any of you have, that you will see that everything's changed. The idyllic, beautiful green grass area is gone. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Public comment still open? Anybody else wishing to come forward? Seeing none. Anthony, do we have any calls from the public, sir?
Thank you, Mayor Heading. Currently, I do not see any raised hands in the queue.
Okay, I'll close the public comment and bring it back to us. I just wanted to ask Chief McCrayne, I was just, I heard a public safety issue mentioned from one of our community members. Did you encounter any encroachment issues with regard to foliage, neighbor issues, and access impairment issues?
None that I'm aware of. There weren't any reported to us, but I'll talk to the crew and find out.
Be great. Appreciate you following up on that. And then if I could have either, I don't know, Paul or Greg speak to the CDP, Ms. Winholz's comments regarding continued concern about loss of trees, where we are with compliance, and replanting plan. Do you have those pictures, which she didn't get, I guess? Okay. Thank you. I'll give you a minute to take a look at that, Paul.
So the, again, my name's Paul Amico. I'm the program manager for the water reclamation facility. We have not removed any trees that weren't approved by the coastal development permit. So that, I mean, that's the short answer. Additional trimming is done. A tree is defined by its diameter at breast height. And so if there is underbrush or other vegetation that doesn't meet the definition of a tree, it can be removed as part of the coastal development permit. Those pictures, the one thing I do want to say about the taking of the pictures and being on the bike path is that's a closed work zone, and we really can't have the public in that area. That's, it's not safe for them to be there. So I don't know what else to say. We haven't removed any additional trees beyond what was in the coastal development permit.
I appreciate that, Mr. Amico. And Mayor, if I may, I would just add that the city has not directed any contractor, nor am I aware that Corolla has directed any contractor to remove any trees unnecessarily. The trees that have been removed were necessary to remove as part of the conveyance project. There were some that were threatened because they were already in poor health and would have created a safety hazard. There are others that just happen to be directly in the way of the improvements that were being installed there. We have made a commitment in the Public Works Department to bring forth a tree, excuse me, a tree replacement plan in the future. We're waiting until we have a final number of removals at the conclusion of this segment of the project, and so once we have that, we will bring that plan to the Public Works Advisory Board and to City Council.
If I could just add one, a couple different things on that, is the restoration plan for the bike path, which is currently under development. We anticipate, seeing we have a concept on the website, on the WRF website, and then we have the detailed restoration plan that we have to provide to the contractor for tree replacement along the bike path and other restoration activities, beautification activities. It's about half complete, or we should be seeing a 50% design on that soon. And then the last thing I would say is, is a requirement of the coastal development permit and also as part of our program management team, we have a local biologist on our staff that oversees all tree removals and all activities along the bike path and in places where we require oversight from the biologist. So.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate that. Okay. I'll move us to consent. The consent agenda is item A, A1 through A8. Public comment is now open for the consent agenda. Any member of the public wishing to speak on consent? I have no slips filled out, but public comment is open. Seeing no members of the public. Anthony, do we have any calls for comment on public, excuse me, on the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mayor Heading. Currently, I do not see any raised hands in the queue.
All right. I'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to council, consent agenda. Any items to pull? If not, I would entertain a motion for either approval or not.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Addis, second by Councilmember Barton, to approve A1 through A8. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. That moves us to item C-1. This is the, our first business item of the evening. This is the water reclamation facility, WRF Program Recycled Water Facilities Injection Well, number one contract award in the amount of $346,725. Mr. Qualick, are you going to start us off, sir?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I'm pleased to bring Mr. Amico back up to the podium. I just want to say that this is really a landmark move for the city as we really see the light at the end of the tunnel with regards to the plants and the conveyance projects and now begin to focus more on recycled water. The pilot injection well is necessary to understand the hydrology in our groundwater and to understand what the potential is and what the opportunities are. So, Mr. Amico, we'll speak to that and talk about the award. Thank you.
Thank you again, Mayor, City Council, and Moreau Bay community members. So, yeah, this item, we received, this is actually the second time this portion of the project was bid, or the first time we didn't receive any bids. Drillers are very, very busy right now, and so our hydrogeologists and the program team worked with some local drillers and got some feedback that the way that we had structured the prior bid was going to be difficult for them to meet those requirements, given their workload. So we got a good, we got one bid, we got a good bid. They plan on starting that work toward the end of July. So as Public Works Director Qualick said, this is the first step toward actually putting holes in the ground over in the injection site. And so what's probably not easy to see is the, is in this, in this slide, is the bike path is on the right-hand side, and this is in an area that the city acquired from Vistra, an easement they acquired from Vistra. So it sits about, it sits a couple hundred feet toward the ocean from the bike path, and what's off the screen to the north is Moreau Creek. So it's in that area there. So this well will be drilled, actually as a full-scale injection well. That's how it's been planned and designed. But for this particular portion of the project, what the driller will do after they develop the well is we'll conduct an injection test where we inject water into the ground to prove out some of the modeling results that we had seen from the hydrogeologists. What this will do is it's the first step toward the design of the full-scale injection system, and so with this well, the hydrogeologists will be able to validate their model, and then we will run a number of different scenarios to see how the groundwater aquifer responds to injection. We already have good information on extraction from the city's extraction, current, existing extraction well, and now what we're going to try to do is prove out what the modeling has shown. On the phone, I can take some questions.
Greg, anything to follow up on that? You're good? Okay. Thanks, Paul. Appreciate it. Thank you, Greg. Maybe I'll start with a couple questions for whomever. Paul, you coming back?
Yeah.
Thought I was going to get out of that one.
Yeah, thanks. I noticed basically in the staff report, but I just wanted to call it out, that this was within, or fell within the budgeted amount that you had. And so we're within that and not going to exceed that.
That's correct.
As far as you know.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then secondarily, based upon the initial, I guess, testing that was done, what more does this show that that didn't show? The initial modeling?
The initial modeling, yes. So some models, as you can tell, they're, they're pretty detailed. The model we have, the aquifer is very detailed, but it still is a model. And there's an old saying that I learned from an attorney colleague of mine years ago is, "All models are wrong and some are useful." In this case, this one is very useful for us, and so what we're trying to do is make it more right, because every model is an empirical model. It's done with mathematics, and it's done based on characteristics and various testing of the aquifer. But in this case, this type of test has not been done yet. And so if we don't get this right, if we inject too much water into the ground, and the model's shown it can take about 100 to 200 gallons per minute, we can actually bubble up water out of the ground. And so what this does is allow us to really dial in not just the amount we can inject in the aquifer, but the number of wells that will be able to optimize that injection and those extraction rates. So what it's doing is taking a model with a band of accuracy, and it's tightening that band down so that we can be more accurate with our results and rely on them better for design.
And just for the public certification and for those of us that aren't engineers, at the end of the day, can you tell us what we get for this test? I think you kind of said it, but in layman's terms, what, you know, what's the bottom line of what it does?
The bottom line of what it does is gives us more data to be confident in the future design. The second benefit that we get from drilling the well and the way that we're doing this is we know there will be extraction wells, and we won't have to drill another one in this very spot. So this is going to be converted to a full-scale injection well later on, because we thought about the future and didn't want to drill another one, a smaller one now and then a bigger one later.
And so I'll ask you another question, just so the public is aware. Is this a component of determining the feasibility of our recycled water component of the program itself?
It's, the feasibility of the recycled water component has been determined. There was a feasibility study that was done. That was a past study. What this actually allows us to do is to, with those model result validation, and the most important thing that the vision of drinking water cares about is the travel time through the aquifer. So we're now going to be able to better dial in what we think So, we're now going to be able to better dial in what we think, or what we've modeled that travel time to be with this injection test.
Will this further refine quantification with regard to the, the amount that we might be able to get at the end of the day?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's an important component, right? Because this might be a commodity that not only could be used by the community, is that correct, or potentially sold on the market in the future?
That's correct.
Okay. Great. And last question. If we don't do this, does that basically eliminate the ability to do reclamation in the future?
It doesn't eliminate it, but what it may do is push the city and the designer toward more conservatism. Meaning, in this case, maybe we don't get the, we don't have an ideal situation where we get the wells placed in the proper places. Maybe we can't, maybe we pull back on the amount we think we can inject because we haven't really refined that model. So, what this gives is more certainty, which reduces the city's risk that, that this will be improperly operated in the future.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate that. Councilmember Ford, any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Actually, the last remaining question I have after this Q and A is regarding the agreement between owner and contractor under Article 2 for a time of completion. I was looking at the letter B, which talks about if the contractor shall pay the city $1,000 for each day if the work is not completed in time, which, prior to that, it said, within 45-day, I guess there's a 45-day buffer, like after, you know, after the projected amount of time it takes. So, if they don't complete it within that 45-day buffer, they owe us $1,000 a day, is my understanding?
Right.
Okay. So, does that offset, with your educated opinion, or maybe staff can, can chime in, but does that cover any projected costs in delay? Like, you know, I, we've, we've had a lot of delays lately and, like, extra costs because of that. And so, my concern is, does this offset that, or is this just like a good gesture, you know?
No, I mean, the, the way that these, we call those liquidated damages for failure to meet the schedule, and the way we calculate those is the actual damage to the city. And so, in this case, it was set at $1,000 per day. It's more of an art to set liquidated damages than it is a science, because sometimes if you make those too high, then you don't get good bids. Contractors would price in risk into that if they think they can't meet the schedule. In this case, well drilling is a pretty straightforward activity. So, we, we try to calculate that as actual damages, in this case, because we have other delays that we're, we're faced with. I mean, if we delay this, then there's, it cascades, and then there's funding tied up with all of this, and, and so, it's pretty important we get it right.
Okay. Yeah, that was my concern, is like, how would that trickle down? And if that $1,000 even makes a difference? Projected, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's, that's all I have.
Great. Councilmember Addis, questions?
I don't have any at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barton, any questions?
Paul, I'm just curious about the, if this is a, sort of a test well, how many, how many injection wells are we looking at in total for the project?
At this point in time, the, the modeling and all the analysis that's been done in the past said that four injection wells, a total of four, which would include this one, would be required. And in fact, that's in the WIFIA funding agreement, is that we would drill a minimum of four.
Okay.
But the model, we'll prove that out with the modeling, could be, could be, need more. We don't know. But right now, it's four, is what, what all the studies have said.
All right. Thanks.
Councilmember Heller, sir?
Thank you, Mayor.
Sir?
So, the contract listed here, this is for drilling the well only, right?
That's correct.
So, the testing that you talk about will be done by the hydrogeological firm?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
So, this is for, what's the bid alternate for, the $9,900? There's a bid alternate listed here.
Let me just check my notes.
Page 47 of your staff report, $9,900?
I am not, I am not certain of that. I'm sorry about that. But I'm not certain what that bid alternate is.
You can get back to me on that.
Okay. I will.
So, a lot of good questions have been asked, particularly, so it sounds like there'll be three additional injection wells, assuming that the models are correct in terms of how much we can inject into the ground, but there might be more if we can't inject what we are expecting to inject? Is that fair to say, or?
It could be, it could be more if it turns out that they need to be spread out in such a way, and we need to run at a lower rate. Say, we've said that we, we can inject 100 to 200, and if, if it turns out we need more due to the aquifer characteristics, then we may end up having to drill more. But right now, it's the, everything's shown four.
Now, I know you needed a permit from the Department of Drinking Water for this whole thing to work. At what point in time, you're drilling wells now, at what point in time, what has to be done in order to get that permit?
So, the, the, there are a couple of different steps. One is, we do the pilot injection test, we finish the modeling, we continue to discuss those results with the Division of Drinking Water, we complete the design. That design will then validate that basis of, the basis of design. We put in the full-scale wells, do a tracer study, and that tracer study then shows the actual travel time with the full-scale system, and at that time, they issue the permit.
Gotcha. Thank you for that explanation. In terms of costs and budget and these things, something I'm always concerned about, what is the total cost for the IPR project? What is the budget right now? Excuse me.
The budget right now is, at this point, I think it's around $6 million, if I, if I remember off the top of my head.
Okay. And you know how much of that has been spent or committed?
I don't have that off the top of my head. I have data on my computer, but I, I don't know. It's, we've, most of that has been related to the hydrogeo, the hydrogeological consultant, GSI, and then our permitting work. And so, it's been a few hundred thousand dollars at this point.
So, for future reference for changes like this, I think they need to be put in context of what the budget is and how much has been spent or committed from that budget?
Yes.
And then, if this were to be approved, what would be the remaining budget? You know, at the end of the day, and then also what that contingency or general project number might be. So, that would help me make a decision on this. It's early in this project, so I'm not really concerned about this one. But I think it's important that proposals like this have the full budget numbers to know exactly how much contingency we have left. I don't want to get too close to the edge and then be surprised. You know what I'm saying?
Absolutely. Can provide that in the future, yeah.
Those are my questions. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. That concludes our questions. I'll go ahead and open up public comment. This is public comment on item C-1. Any, I don't have any slips, so any member of the public wishing to speak on this, come forward. Betty, welcome back.
Betty Winholz, again. I have a few questions. If you could put that picture back up, that would be great. I think it kind of shows some of the devastation that's happened around there. But if you notice where the well's being proposed, it's right in the middle of a grove of trees, rather than just north where there's not any. I'm sure there's a scientific reason why, but I'm just pointing out that means those trees will now be gone. So, that leads to my first question, which is, what is the size of a full-scale groundwater injection well? And that's the language they used in the staff. So, are we talking a half an acre? Are we talking a couple of acres? What is, how much space does that take up? Another question I would have is, because this was not, again, within the EIR for the WRF, I'm assuming this has not had an environmental study done on it? And so, I'm wondering how that is sitting with Coastal with regard to that? The third one of my questions is, and this gets a little weird to me, because we're talking about injection wells, we're talking about extraction wells. And so, my reference is that a couple of years ago, in the Estero Bay News, there was a little video that showed that the injection wells were being used to keep saltwater intrusion out. And that wasn't used so much to, I guess it was used to keep out the saltwater so you could extract water maybe further in. So, I guess, I'd like to understand the relationship of the extraction wells to the injection wells, and the distance that is, and are, how that relationship works. It's, I, I'm assuming it's kind of engineering, mechanical type of explanation, but I think, as a resident, I'd like to understand what's happening to my groundwater and how we're preventing saltwater intrusion and, and that kind of thing. And yet, how we may, because the staff report says, could be achieved without inducing seawater intrusion, so we don't know, we know that. I assume that's what the study is partly about. So, thank you for answering those questions.
Thank you, Betty. Public comment is still open. Anybody wishing to come forward, please do so now. Seeing no further public comment. Anthony, do we have any calls, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Currently, I do not see any raised hands in the queue.
All right. Thank you. I'll close public comment. Paul, did you want to come back and perhaps address Betty's question regarding, well, she had several, one, the size of the well, first of all?
Size of the well is an 18-inch borehole with a 12-inch well casing.
And a question about EIR, CDP?
I believe that the extraction component, I mean, the reclamation component is included in the EIR, but in this particular area, we do have to go back for a CDP. We have to, once we get the, get down the road on design, much like we had to do with the WRF and the conveyance facilities, we then go back to Coastal for an amendment to the CDP.
Okay. And what about saltwater intrusion? Did you have a comment on that?
Saltwater intrusion, in this case, is really dependent more on the extraction rate. Obviously, it's good, it's, it's critical that we get the injection and extraction rates balanced. And in this case, we, we acquired this land from Vistra, and when we did that, we went all the way to the Embarcadero. And so, the reason we did that is because, one, is we need access for the, these wells, but, two, if we ever had to go that far over and get to the Embarcadero to provide a barrier, which the modeling is, is, that's one of the scenarios we're currently modeling, in order to extract, say, the maximum amount, then we would have the flexibility to go all the way to the Embarcadero with the injection wells. But the modeling thus far has shown that with the injection wells along the land that was acquired in easement from Vistra is that we can achieve the city's goals with respect to the reclamation component.
And do you have any idea about the distance from the extraction well to the injection well? There was a question about that.
Right. The distance from the extraction well about, the first extraction well, I think, is about 600 feet away, if I recall. But it could be farther, it could be 600 to 1,000 feet in, in some of the nearby extraction wells, because they're up in Lila Kaiser Park, more toward the highway and over by the hotel over there. But there are ones further north as well.
Great. Thank you, Paul. Appreciate that. With that, I'll bring it back to council for further discussion, or I'll entertain a motion, if there's any.
You have a comment I'd like to make?
Yeah, absolutely, please.
If I could, Mayor, thank you.
Yes.
So, those are good questions by the public, and I think it might be good if, in the future, maybe after you test this first well, that Corolla could come back and give some kind of a presentation so the general public understands how the whole system will work. I think that would be a good use of our new large TVs. So, just a suggestion. Thank you. That's all.
That's a good idea. All right. Any further comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion if there is one. If not, I'll make one.
I'll move to approve this item.
Okay. Motion by, all right, Councilmember Addis, second by Councilmember Heller for staff recommendation. Is there any further discussion? And Councilmember Heller's comment is noted. I do agree with that. Thank you for that. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. That leads us to our second business item. This is item C-2 in the agenda. This is a review of our reserve policies, considering adopting a proposed pension reserve policy, and a review of potential Section 115 trust contribution. You'll recall that we had an extensive presentation from the consultants regarding the potential benefits of a Section 115 trust. One of the recommendations that came out of that not only was to proceed, but also to come back with a, an overarching policy for consideration by the council. And looks like we've achieved at least that submission this evening, and so, we're happy to hear, Sarah, what you have for us tonight, and thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. You just did a great job summing up the item that's before you tonight, and that's great. And in addition to that, we'll also ask that you review the current reserve policies in a slightly consolidated form, adding the potential new pension reserve policy. So, the recommendation I'll come back to at the end, it, it is two parts to do both of those things tonight. So, as you mentioned, you had previous conversations about this in January, about the pension reserve, and even before that, you identified, as part of your goal setting session in November, that fiscal sustainability and specifically addressing the pension liability were priorities for council. Last year, about this time, you, oh, excuse me. I'm realizing that my mouse is, there we go. You also reviewed all of the broader city reserve policies in detail through a council subcommittee, and so, we're not recommending any changes to those reserve levels tonight, but we are re-presenting all of those to you, along with this new potential addition. So, there are a few things that, kind of cleanup items, that we would like to do with the existing reserve policies in addition to adding a pension reserve policy. We'd like to consolidate all of the existing reserve policies into one document for ease of implementation and transparency in terms of the public's ease of accessing all of those reserve policies in one place. We'd also like to consolidate some of the funds, which is consistent with Government Finance Officers Association's best practices in budgeting and accounting. So, specifically, we currently have four funds, for each of our enterprise funds, the water, harbor, and sewer funds. I see a typo on this slide on the bottom left, but the water, harbor, and sewer funds all have operating funds, CIP funds, accumulation funds, and equipment replacement funds, which results in a very high volume of inter-fund transfer budgeting and duplicate budgeting. So, we're recommending consolidating those funds into two funds per enterprise, which, again, would be consistent with GFOA best practices and also compliant with GASB Government Accounting Board standards. So, nothing would change about the reserve levels, nothing would change about, of course, keeping all of those funds separate by enterprise, but we would recommend keeping the operating revenue fund and the CIP fund for each of the two enterprises, rather than the four. And then, finally, the only other change to the citywide reserve policy would be at your direction tonight, potentially adding a proposed pension reserve policy. And so, I've got that here before you. Basically, there would be a couple of thresholds that we would look to have met, and if so, then we would contribute a certain amount to the Section 115 trust. So, we would look at the prior year's annual comprehensive financial report, and if the general fund emergency reserve balance meets the minimum target, which is already established by the current policy, at 33% of operating funds, and that's operating funds both in the general fund and in the Measure Q and E fund. If those conditions are met, then the general fund would contribute 33% of the audited year's realized year-end general fund surplus to address pension liabilities. And I know this gets technical, so I'm, I'm happy to go into more detail, but we would contribute that to a Section 115 trust in the following year's budget cycle. So, it wouldn't happen automatically, but that would provide a baseline recommendation for staff and guidance for implementation, and then council would review that specific allocation as part of budget adoption. And consistent with council direction back in January, we would also look to have the enterprise funds contribute their fair share toward the pension liability, and we, of course, do track all of the pension liabilities by fund according to staffing levels. So, we would recommend that in years where enterprise funds have also met their minimum reserve policies for the prior fiscal year, which is defined in our current reserve policies for each fund, then they would also contribute their fair prorata share toward the 115 trust commensurate with the general fund's contribution at that time. And then, if council directs, excuse me, then we would establish a restricted Section 115 pension trust, and that is legally restricted by law to be used for pension expenses. 115 pension trust, and that is legally restricted by law to be used for pension expenses. So, that can either go toward paying down your one-time unfunded liability, or it can go toward paying your normal pension costs in a year of financial distress. So, this is where this fund actually acts as a form of reserves, in that, in a downturn, if the city had challenges meeting its normal cost, or even its minimum UAL payment, then these funds from the 115 trust could make that payment for the city. It could certainly also be just saved for several years, until the city is in a position to make a one-time contribution to the UAL, and that would be our hope. We think that structuring the policy this way has some advantages for Morro Bay. We looked at a number of different reserve policies, and there are many cities that have policies in place. They have various structures. I included some of that information in the staff report. Some cities include this every year in their operating budget, for example, and others have a similar model, where they basically take advantage of the good years, capitalize on those strong years. In our case, we would also maintain a robust emergency reserve of at least 33%, or at least four months of operating costs. Plus, you have policies in place for reserves in a lot of other funds as well. So, in addition to the general fund emergency reserve, you may have seen in the staff report, we have a vehicle replacement reserve, we have an IT reserve, we have a facilities maintenance reserve, we have a risk management reserve, we have several reserves that would supplement the general fund reserve for those particular uses. Structuring the policy this way would also leave room for other council priorities, so taking one-third of the prior year's surplus would, of course, then leave the other two-thirds of that prior year's surplus available for council to allocate in the upcoming budget cycle. And then, again, you know, finally, council would ultimately have a veto, basically, power at the budget time. So, staff would bring forward a recommendation consistent with this policy in the subsequent budget cycle, and if council wanted to deviate from the policy that was in place, they could direct staff to do so, or update the policy and do so. What would that mean for the coming budget year, if you were to direct us to adopt this policy tonight? Fortunately, we're in a position this year where the general fund emergency reserve was met as of 6:30 2021, and we did have a general fund surplus of approximately $2.5 million in 2021. In addition, the enterprise funds all met their reserve policies, and this is defined on a working capital basis, not a net position basis, which is an accounting wonkiness that we can go into, if you'd like, but they did all meet that on a working capital basis. And so, the contributions for '22, '23, which we would bring forward to you in the budget study session, if directed tonight, would total 1.06 million across the funds, and the breakdown of that, according to the prorata share of each fund, is roughly 826,000 for the general fund, 96,000 in the sewer fund, 70,000 in the water fund, and 88,000 in the harbor fund. So, these would just be one-time contributions, and then they would be reassessed. This whole process would be undertaken each year in reassessed capacity. I did want to add some additional context. I did check in with NHA advisors before the meeting tonight, and you'll recall that they led you through the January discussion. So, they provided some updated context. The CalPERS current rate of return is very low this year, and so, they are anticipating that in future years, our UAL will likely increase again, if CalPERS does not meet its discount rate targets, which is currently 6.8%. So, having a 115 trust in place would help the city safeguard against that, or have some funds in place to potentially make increased UAL contributions, even on a minimum contribution basis, if we're required to in the future. And then, in addition, I know one of the policy options we looked at in January was the pension obligation bond, and a number of cities have done that, or have done that in combination with a 115 trust in some cases. Unfortunately, right now, in NHA's words, the POB bond is basically dead. The market is basically dead, because interest rates are now over 5%. That doesn't mean that, you know, the other policy tools aren't still available for the city in the future. We can certainly still establish a 115 trust now, and then you remain aware of, you know, the bond market and the broader context of our UAL, and take other actions in the future, if that's warranted. So, next steps, depending on council's direction tonight, are that we would return to council at the May 24th and 25th study session, with a budget that includes these pension trust contribution numbers. And then, of course, we would actually need to establish a 115 trust. So, we would re-engage NHA advisors to help us do that. They vet these for many cities, and we would also recommend engaging one member of CFAC and one member of city council, if you would like, and if you could provide direction on that tonight, that would be helpful. And so, we would establish a 115 trust, we would bring formation documents back to the city council, and at that time, council would provide direction on a risk allocation, based on the portfolio options that the selected provider offers. So, they offer usually three to five different risk portfolio options, and we would seek council direction on that before, actually, as part of the formation. And then, as I mentioned, each year going forward, we would evaluate the city's ability to make future contributions consistent with the policy. I did include some alternatives in your staff report and here on the slide tonight, that we can talk through, if you would like. Of course, any alternative alternatives are also possible. And then, that just brings me to our recommendation, which, again, is to adopt a resolution 3722, which implements this pension reserve policy, and also approves the updated and consolidated city reserve policy, which is attached to the staff report and to the resolution, and then to just provide us direction on those contributions and next steps actually associated with forming the 115 trust. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Wow. That's a lot of stuff, but you did a great job in bringing forward all of the work that you and your staff have done, and that we've done in the past with regard to this. So, I appreciate your presentation and the clarity of it. I'll just maybe ask some questions for our public, because this can get, I think, a little confusing for me, too. I mean, so, the UAL is the unfunded accrued liability, basically, at a point in time that is estimated in terms of what are unfunded, or what money we've not put in to CalPERS pension, that we assume in the future is going to be due for our retirees?
Yes, and a little bit more broadly than that. It's not necessarily money that Morro Bay hasn't put in, but it's the difference between the rate of return, historically, that CalPERS has achieved or not achieved. So, it's the difference between the projected cost of the benefits and the contributions to date. So, it went up very significantly several years ago, with the reduction of the projected rate of returns by CalPERS.
And given the one note that you had noted there with regard to the returns this year being markedly lower, would it be prudent to assume that our UAL is going to rise, maybe I'll use the word significantly, but will rise, perhaps significantly?
I think it would be prudent to anticipate that. I should mention that there is a lag, so there's about a two-year lag in when we actually need to make payments on that. And so, if CalPERS has a poor rate of return year, it takes them one year to update our actuarial analysis, and then, in the subsequent year, our payments increase. So, we would have, we would have basically 12 to 18 months' notice, but I think that it would be prudent to anticipate that.
And the Section 115 trust preferentially allows money to be put in the trust, that is, to be used only, except for the emergency that you described, if that's correct, like, you know, a recession or what have you, should we need to pull funds out. But it provides an investment vehicle that has a higher rate of return than other vehicles that we are currently using. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And based upon your analysis, and I will tell you that I've had the opportunity to meet with Sarah at least twice, to go over, you know, what potentially the budget looks like at the end of the year, you're recommending an initial contribution of about $1.06 million?
That's correct, for '22, '23.
And that will still maintain our general fund emergency reserve above the 33% limit that we've set as a council, if we do that?
Yes, and I do want to just clarify. I mean, this policy looks backward at the reserve level, and then budgets it going forward. So, in this year, I do anticipate that we will still meet the reserve policy. There could be a year in which we met it in one year, and making a contribution, you know, makes us fall somewhat lower than that, but we would always be looking at that and presenting that to you with the adopted, or with the proposed budget, including the projected fund balance. So, that would be an instance where council could potentially say, you know what, maybe let's hold back or deviate from the policy in a given year. But in this year, we're looking, we're looking good.
And then, am I assuming correctly, on page 65 of the staff report, you're basically outlining a cleanup of our reserve policies to become more efficient, and to be more in line with GOFA standards as best practice?
Absolutely, that's correct.
So, we're not changing any major parameters, or changing any funding mechanism, et cetera, et cetera?
No, it would all still stay within each enterprise fund or group of funds, and the reserve levels, the percentages of operating expenditures remain the same.
Great. And then, we had also examined a general obligation bond, but I think I heard you say tonight, if I'm correct, and this is a question, that right now, that appears to be out of the question, because interest rates have risen so dramatically in the last several months.
Yes, the pension obligation bond market has had significant increases in its interest rates since January.
So, you wouldn't recommend pursuing that?
It's actually potentially not even possible, according to our advisors. I don't know that anyone's issuing that type of debt currently, and that could definitely change in the future.
Just want to make sure I asked it, because we've had other public comment in the past about potentially looking at it, so. Good. Well, that's all my questions. Thank you for a very clear presentation. And Councilmember Barton, did you have additional questions?
Sorry, I don't have any extra questions. This was just a really great presentation. It took a while to cycle through it, but it was so clear, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Heller, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. What is our total UAL at this point?
It's approximately 27 million.
27 million, okay. And you mentioned the CalPERS discount being 6.8%. I thought they lowered it. Is that what it is, or is that for the calculation ending 6:30?
Excuse me, that's what it's been lowered to, from 7.0 to 6.8. And so, our payments will change in '23, '24 to reflect that.
So, they probably didn't lower it enough, did they? What else did I want? Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Heller. Councilmember Addis, any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I'm super glad to see this come forward, because we have been talking for such a long time about how to do better, and what to do, and how to address this, and it's gone from CFAC to council to CFAC, and just appreciate it coming forward and kind of getting the ball rolling. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ford, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Johnson-Rios, for that wonderful report. I just, I have a couple of questions for clarification. I know that you mentioned that this is all within best practices, but just want clarification, that it's best practice for cities to spread costs between general and enterprise funds?
That's a policy decision, I think, but it is certainly consistent with government accounting standards, yes, to allocate costs, personnel-related costs, to the enterprise fund, where those staff are performing their duties.
Okay, thank you. And then, my other question, and the mayor touched on it, and just if I can get a little bit more information on it. So, I know that, you know, the trust fund to be used in the case of emergencies, is there any other possible use for it, as far as, like, staffing goes? Like, say, you know what happened when the pandemic hit, and we had to lay off staff? Is there any other use for it, other than emergencies, or what qualifies as an emergency, I guess?
So, it's legally restricted to only be used for pension costs. And so, it's kind of similar to the OPEB trust that the city has established, in that we can use that to pay for future liabilities, for other post-employment benefits, or for current year costs for other post-employment benefits. The pension trust would be the same, that we could use it for future liabilities, which is the unfunded liability, or we could use it for current year pension costs. And so, in a downturn year, right now, our total pension costs are about $3 million a year, between normal costs and unfunded liability minimum payments. That would give us, depending on how much we accumulated in the trust, up to $3 million of flexibility in a given year, to move, to use the pension trust funds for pension costs, thereby freeing up additional funds for operating.
All right, that makes perfect sense. Thank you for just clarifying that for me.
Of course.
That's all the questions that I have, so I'll reserve my comments later.
Great, thank you. With that, I'll go ahead and open up public comment. This is public comment for item C-2 on the agenda. Public comment is now open. Any members of the public wishing to come forward, please do so now. Betty, welcome.
Betty Winholz, do want to compliment the consolidation of funds. I think that's a great thing. I'm not sure how they got so spread out, and I'm glad to see it consolidated. I have two questions in terms of what these funds mean, and that is compensated absences reserve. I've not seen that before, so I don't know what that encompasses, and if you could talk about that. Second, I'm, I know that we're at 33% for our emergency reserves. It was mentioned in the report that maybe you wanted to go to 50%. I find that really high, and I'm not sure why you would do that. So, I guess I would hope that we would stay at the 33%. And then, this last question is really for council, in terms of how, as you, as individuals, are going to decide, when you have this excess money, and you want to put it towards the pensions, how do you decide how much of that versus how much you need to keep for things you haven't funded and operating, and in particular, I'm thinking of streets and street repairs, and that that fund has not been spent the last year. I think supposedly, it's being spent maybe this coming year, but we know that that has not been on track, as the program that you approved has did it, or passed it. So, I'm wondering, how are you all going to decide how much you're going to put aside for this pension reserve? How much will you keep in the operating budget for these things you haven't finished fixing in our city? Thanks.
Whoops, there we go. Thank you, Betty. Public comment is still open for item C-2. Seeing no other public comment. Anthony, do we have any call-in public comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Currently, I do not see any raised hands in the queue.
All right, thank you. I'll bring, close public comment, bring it back to city council, and just address, if you could help Ms. Winholz with the compensated absence reserve that was established a number of years ago?
Uh huh. That is actually a component of the general fund, or a fund that is reported on and act for with the general fund, and it represents the cost of providing payouts to employees typically, when they separate from the city, for leave time earned that they have not yet used. So, vacation time, et cetera. And so, that actually represents a financial liability for the city that is measured and audited. And so, there's a reserve policy in place that I believe was established several years ago, that identifies that the city should put in reserve at least 30% of the liability, as last defined in the last audit.
Great, and I'm not going to poll each council member to ask how Great, and I'm not going to poll each council member to ask how we'll determine, but perhaps you could go through the process that was utilized from a policy standpoint in determining what the contribution was or that you're recommending for this year, and what you weighed?
Sure. I think Ms. Winholz raises a really important policy question, how to best balance the unfunded pension liability with the ongoing operating needs and the capital needs of the city, and so, that's where we landed on the utilizing 33% of a prior year's surplus, assuming that our reserve policy was met, is a way to, you know, begin to make progress addressing the unfunded liability, but to still use the majority of the prior year's surplus for a balance between operating and capital needs that council would elect in the upcoming budget cycle each year.
In my opinion, at least personally, that determination would change from year to year based upon competing priorities for budgeted funds and performance from an operating standpoint of the city, so, at least that's my opinion. Thank you. Okay, that's back to us now. Entertain a motion or discussion. I'll go ahead and make a motion, and then we can perhaps open it up to further discussion and see if that gets a second. I'll recommend that we adopt resolution number 37-22, which implements a proposed pension reserve policy and approves the updated and consolidated city reserve policy, which does not make changes to reserve levels, but simplifies the enterprise fund reserve tracking and accounting as outlined in this report, and direct staff to initially contribute for fiscal year 2022, 2023, $1,600,000 to the establishment of a section 115 trust, and to move forward with the appointment of one CFAC member, one city council member, and to move forward with the selection of a 115 trust provider, and then return to council with formation documents and a risk portfolio selection policy depending upon the specific offerings of the selected provider. And the caveat I'll make is that I think this is important enough to warrant, I hate to say it, another council subcommittee, but we're terminating one tonight, given the fact that we're hopefully going to be done with our update to the policy manual, but I really think you need a subcommittee of two council members to work with you on this as opposed to a single. I think it's just a huge workload, so, I would alter that by, my recommendation would be to form a council subcommittee as opposed to a single member to achieve that, so.
I'll second.
Motion by Mayor Heading, second by Councilmember Addis, and I think Councilmember Ford, you had some comments. I'll start with you, if you had comments.
Sure. Well, I do have a question now.
It's okay.
My question is, if we have two council members, are we still looking at just one CFAC member? Is that, okay, all right. And, okay, so, my comments are, I really appreciate the fact that we are, you know, taking into consideration involving CFAC and involving council in this decision-making process, so, I want to thank staff for recommending that. I think that's really important, and I appreciate the clarification on how to, how much we want to contribute, you know, and how it's a year-to-year basis, it's not set in stone. We can, you know, hopefully figure out where our priorities lie from year to year because we know that can change. So, I am in support of one through and two, and I do have one question, though. Are we deciding, are we going to vote on who those two members are, or is that, because it does say, you know, it's up to us to whether we want to designate it or not designate it?
Do you need that done tonight, or do you prefer that to happen tonight, looking for anybody? Or?
I believe if the council wanted to appoint two council members to advise on the section 115 trust, that's consistent with the noticing that there was contemplated one council member appointed, and so, two would be a subcommittee by default, so I think that's an appropriate action to consider tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
So, would that be a separate motion?
Would you like those named this evening? Would you like recommendations for appointments this evening?
The sooner we have direction, the sooner we can move forward on establishing a 115 trust, so, that's a council's discretion.
All right, and I'll just maybe hear from anybody else that has comments, and then we can entertain that thought. Please.
Could we, could we vote on this motion and then vote on the subcommittee so that we don't get?
Yes, oh, absolutely, yes. We could do that.
In case we have disagreement.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure we won't, but.
Do we have comments?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
So, you know, I am the least qualified person to be on the subcommittee, let me just put that out there, but you've done a great job of organizing this information. I think I actually understand it a little bit, so, kudos to you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. I appreciate your recognition of staff. Any further comments? We'll vote on the motion, and then we'll take a second consideration for the appointment of a subcommittee. All right, no further comments, I'll go ahead and call a question.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, open for nominations, hands, people jumping up and down, excited to be part of it?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I would like to, I don't know, nominate?
A point?
A point. Councilmember Barton and Mayor Heading, only because Councilmember Heller said, "No way, Jose," basically over there, so, I'd like to appoint the two of you. You seem to work well on the handbook committee, so, if you're interested, I'd like to suggest the two of you work on this as well.
I'd second that motion.
Get you out of it, huh? Yeah. Any discussion? Councilmember Barton, are you jumping up and down?
I'm not jumping up and, not jumping up and down, I'm interested in this. It's a very important thing to, for the city to be working on, and every city up and down California is working on things like this because it's just so important, so, I'd like to be in there.
Well, it would be my pleasure to work with Councilmember Barton and my, you know, joy to work with staff on moving this forward, so, I would support the motion. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Got you out of it, too. All right, we'll go ahead and do a roll-call vote on that motion.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Great, let the community know I was chastised last meeting for not providing a public health moment for our council members, so I'll just ask our council if there's a need for a short break for a public health moment. Just looking, I see some heads nodding. If I get one head nodding. So, I have 7:49, would 7:55, six minutes be okay? Is that enough time? Great, we'll reconvene in six minutes, 7:55, yeah, that's nine and six five.
Ready to go, Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. Our devices are rolling and the floor is yours.
Great, welcome back. We are back after a short break. We are on item C-3. This is review and discussion of proposed revisions to the City Council Policies and Procedures and Advisory Bodies Handbook and bylaws as recommended by the council Subcommittee and clarification regarding the Public Works Advisory Board's review of the water reclamation facility project. And Mr. Collins, you want me to start, or did you want, okay. Great, well, thank you. This was our every-two-year review of both our Advisory Body Handbook and City Council Policy Manual. I had the pleasure of working with Councilmember Barton on this magnanimous document that we do get the pleasure of reviewing every two years. Staff has done a great job of outlining the, I think, the major changes that, and I don't really consider them to be major, but the changes that were made with regard to that on page two or page, yeah, page two of 100, is that right? Looks like item C3, two of 100 of the report. And what I would do is just call out for the Subcommittee just a couple of areas that we wanted to point out to you. The first is, starting with page 18 of the staff report on this item. Get to that. That is the very top paragraph there. There was a slight change that no council member shall speak more than once on a particular subject until every other council member has had the opportunity to speak, which has been an existing policy. Council members should discuss items during the decision-making process as opposed to during council member questions. And if you look back in the policy manual, the format is staff presentation, council questions, obviously then public comment, and then we bring it back for discussion. And that's to allow for there not to be discussion until the public has had a chance to weigh in. So I just wanted to call that area out as an area of change. Page 51, section 6-2-1, and let me get there. That's other council member representation on subcommittees. This refers to council liaison assignments. Each of the subcommittees has an appointed council liaison as well as an alternate for that position, for each of the commissions, et cetera. The purpose of the liaison in paragraph two assignment is to facilitate communication between the City Council and the Advisory Board. And it says the liaison also helps to increase the council's familiarity with the membership programs and issues of the Advisory Board. In fulfilling their assignment, members should either attend the advisory body meetings or watch the broadcasts. And then we added, "And present information regarding advisory body meetings to the City Council during council announcements." And Councilmember Ford gave a good example of that this evening, reporting on one of the subcommittees. She's a liaison for. And so we would just want to encourage our liaisons to report back on any important items that maybe they had encountered during their previous meeting prior to the council member meeting. And then council members are not only, excuse me, are not participating members, the last paragraph there, of the advisory body, but are rather to create a linkage between the City Council and the advisory body. Interacting with advisory bodies, council members are to reflect the views of the council as a body. Being an advisory body liaison bestows no special right with respect to advisory body business. Advisory body members can represent positions of the City Council that have been taken via a vote, but they also, if they want to express their own individual opinions, can come up during public comment and make public comment as an individual. And we just thought it was important to point that out to the council as you interact with your various committees. And then lastly, page 73, and let me get there, item B, excuse me, 65, I apologize, page 65. Item three, advisory body work plans. Just wanted to note that there are three basic ways to get information to the advisory bodies to consider. The first would be in the handbook, the general responsibilities of each of the committees or advisory boards is noted, as you note in the handbook. And then secondarily, what we would like to reinstitute are, we used to have meetings, co-joint meetings with the advisory bodies and council during the time when we were setting goals, and asked for advisory body input on what they would like to consider for the year. We'd like to reinstitute that. That would be the second way to get something considered by the body. And then the third would be if during council future agenda items, a council member would like an advisory body to study something or something added to their work plan, that would be a future agenda item that would require majority support by the council to be considered. And then also in consultation with the staff to make sure that they have adequate resources to be able to accomplish that. And again, just wanted to point out the three different ways that things get on advisory body agendas and/or work plans. And then lastly, page 73. Just to call out, and I think we've all had, as council members, issues with this Electronic Email and Public Records Act and the Brown Act. The second paragraph there, we didn't change but thought it was important to call out, says the Brown Act does not prohibit the use of email to make individual contacts between members of an advisory body, the City Council, or the public or staff. However, great care should be taken to avoid the use of email to contact a majority of the council or advisory body, either individually or serially, in a connected plan to engage in collective deliberation on public business. What happens is if you do email more than one council member beside yourself, you create a serial conversation regarding an issue. That becomes a potential Brown Act issue with regard to the fact that the public has not been able to weigh in on the conversation. And so, in essence, we wanted to point that out as, you know, that's been an existing policy, one that I think we all need to pay particular attention to for the future. And that's my report. Thank you, Councilmember Barton, for working with me on this. I don't know if you had any additional comments that you wanted to make.
I just think that it was a good work effort together and it went very smoothly. And thank you for highlighting the things that you just did.
Great. And then Mr. Collins, I believe you have some information from staff you'd like to address as well. Thank you.
Sure. And if I repeat some of the things you said, I apologize. So I'll just go through the discussion section of the staff report and highlight the key areas of change. Under the Council Policies and Procedures, section 137, it updates the agenda correspondence and compliance with the Brown Act related to the Sierra Watch versus Placer County case. Section 6.21 removes the T-Bid Advisory Board from council because they no longer report to council. It's a separate entity from the city now. Under the Advisory Board Bodies Handbook and bylaws, again, removal of the T-Bid Advisory Board from there. We revise consistency with current staff titles, responsibilities throughout. Clarification regarding process for Advisory Board members to add items to the council-approved work plan, which Mayor Heding just highlighted. Mainly, it's just that there'd be a vote within the Advisory Board and then it'd have to consider impacts to resources, whether it's staff or financial, and that would come to City Council for consideration. As we all know, things do occur inside a goals timeline that may not accord with what the goals are. So this is an opportunity to address maybe some new issues that are arising in the middle of a goal cycle. But we have to understand what the implications may be on the existing work plan. Clarification regarding meeting absences is also discussed in length. Dana can cover that if you have any detailed questions on that. Clarification on roles of the Harbor Advisory Board, we just put in a kind of a catch-all statement there and also changed the meeting dates slightly to account for the budget cycle. Under the P-WAB Advisory Board section, we added city parks. It's really from the maintenance side of the house because several years ago, before I got here, Parks and Rec used to be a department. It was consolidated maintenance into the Public Works Department. Recreation's now a division of my office. Parks is primarily now the purview of city public works team. So we call that out so that P-WAB can kind of understand the maintenance section of Parks, but the Rec and Parks Commission still has purview over the long-term plans of the Parks area. So Mr. Greg Qual could probably participate in both commissions when those discussions would come up. And I'll talk about, a little bit more about Public Works Advisory Board a little bit later. Clarification on the role and purpose of Rec and Parks, that's really to account for the name change or title change for the position that runs recreation now. And then clarification on the role and purpose and meeting schedule for Citizen Oversight Finance Advisory Committee. And there's a good amount of detail on that in the staff report. I'll just go to the high level here. Prior to Measure E passing, Measure Q was a standalone oversight responsibility for the CFAC. And it was about $1 million for quite a long time. And typically, similar projects and positions would come forward each year for review, which really allowed the CFAC to look at other areas of need within the financial realm of the city. And we were struggling, frankly, with a lot of different issues with audit findings at the time. So there was an expansion, not only of the work plan, but the number of CFAC members. Now with the passage of Measure E, it's becoming a much larger stake in kind of our discretionary spending for the city and thus a lot more complexity for the CFAC to consider. So we took that into account in talking with CFAC members individually and city council members, truly trying to understand where the biggest bang for the buck is with this committee. We have a lot of really smart people on this team. We want to utilize their, what they understand, you know, their passion about finance, their commitment to the city, making sure we achieve our goals. So we want to, you know, utilize their strengths. And so, we feel it's more imperative that a bulk of the time is spent on Measure QE now, especially with the given complexity with the increased increment of 1.5% sales tax, the interplay between the general fund, capital improvement needs of the city, the requirements to have two reviews each year. So we think the bulk of the work should be there and leave several meetings otherwise to address more of the strategic financial needs of the city related to the city work plan. So there's a good discussion in the staff report about that. That sort of leaves off from the work of the Subcommittee and now get into some of the things that staff would recommend that's particularly related to the Wharf project or program. For a longest time, Citizen Finance Advisory Committee has reviewed the financial components of the Wharf project where P-WAB has looked at the technical components. Probably since day one, there's been questions about the futility of that or how well that works, particularly when questions come up around schedule or technical pieces while reviewing, a financial advisory board is reviewing the financial components and maybe not the expertise in the room to address those issues. And so over time, we've really thought about that. And since this discussion came up around advisory boards, we thought it was imperative at least to put the idea in front of council to consider taking the quarterly budget report out of CFAC's hands, which is more than kind of the day-to-day on-the-ground stuff, and putting it in the hands of P-WAB, which reviews the technical side of the project and change orders. Maybe it belongs better there since you can focus on schedule and have more seamless discussion around the budget going on at that point in time. And that leaves CFAC available to look at the long-term strategic components related to the Wharf or other capital projects moving forward. So we would recommend that the Wharf quarterly report be taken out of CFAC's hands, put it into P-WAB, thus allowing CFAC to focus more on the strategic aims related to capital and other needs in the city. So I think that more or less covers it. And, you know, Dana's here to answer any kind of the detailed questions you may have for the red lines that are attached to the staff report. Greg Qual can talk about, you know, P-WAB's role with the Wharf project. Sarah Johnson Rios can talk about CFAC's current role and what's recommended by the Subcommittee and also what we're recommending with regard to the Wharf and CFAC. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate that overview. And Dana, thank you for all your work as well, Sarah, and staff that was involved in the review. Very comprehensive and appreciate your inputs to that. That will go ahead and open it up for council member questions. Start with Councilmember Addis. Do you have any questions of staff?
No, I don't have any questions on this item, but I do want to say thank you.
Welcome.
For all the hard work on everyone's part.
Okay. Councilmember Ford, any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a few questions. My first question, I'm trying to find where it's at, and I apologize for not being able to reference the exact page. But I guess this question would be for Dana, Ms. Swanson. So I did read in here, and I should have dotted down where it was, but, you know, if a board member misses two consecutive meetings, that it could, you know, it could come to council. What is that process? Does it automatically come to us, or does the board have to vote to send it to us? Like, what does that look like?
That's what we're hoping to clarify with the proposed changes. The current policy is unclear with that regard. So the proposed language would require an advisory board member to advise staff at least seven days in advance of an absence to a regular meeting. And that's to ensure we have a quorum and that meeting can go on as scheduled. They can also request that that absence be excused, and that process could be completed at the advisory board level, as long as it's requested in advance. If they have two consecutive or more than 25% of the, missed more than 25% of the meetings in the calendar year, they would be considered to have resigned unless they submit a formal request to the council that those absences be excused.
Okay. So, okay, that clarifies that. My other question, and actually, it's more, it's kind of, you know, I think it's a comment, so I'm going to hold off on that one. I had one last question regarding correspondence that we received from Mr. Green. He mentioned about the Harbor Advisory Board. He suggests that it expressly states that HAB is not responsible for oversight of waterfront leases. So my question to staff is, should that be included? Does it need to be in there? I did notice that the, again, I apologize for not having that page ready for you, but I do see that it had said, you know, what they're responsible for, but it doesn't necessarily say what they're not responsible for. So does that need to be included?
I'll just say that I don't believe it says that they are responsible for the leases.
Right. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Like, it talks about, sorry, I should clarify. So when it has a description of what the HAB does, it doesn't say what the HAB doesn't do. So would this be an appropriate place to put something that the HAB is not responsible for? Does that need to be included? Just to kind of answer a correspondence that we received.
I mean, certainly could. That would be unusual. I think the purpose and authority is defined pretty well. Though, you know, there are some generalized statements within each of the advisory boards that give some latitude because not all issues fit neatly within one of the buckets. But I'm not aware of any of them reflecting, definitively stating shall not do the following. But that's up to the council if you want to include that.
Okay. I just, yeah, I just, I appreciate that clarification. That's the only questions that I have. I'll keep my comment for later.
Sure. Councilmember Hillary, sir?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Going back to the agenda correspondence question from Mr. Green about the joint meetings, advisory boards and councils, and you spoke to that, Mayor. And I didn't find this in there somewhere, but it's a lengthy document. Can you explain, is this in the document right now, or?
It's not in the document. We had a standing procedure previously, and it wasn't again in the document then, to, when we did goals planning, to convene all the bodies together with council, not at the same time, but each body individually with council. And basically, they would propose their work plan. We would review that and then sanction and/or add to that.
So are you suggesting?
Certainly could be added to.
Are you suggesting we add it?
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, I would support that for sure.
Exactly.
With respect to the Harbor Advisory Board issue, I do think that the duties and responsibilities are clear. The third question here is, consider setting a minimum number or percentage of advisory board meetings that a council member should attend if serving as the liaison. Any thoughts about that or comments? I'm not quite sure what's driving that, but?
Yeah, I'll comment just as a council member, that's a liaison as well, that I either attend, but, you know, it's always been Zoom in the past, and/or watch it later on Channel 20. And I feel comfortable with my peers taking responsibility for reviewing the information in whatever manner they feel fit without specifying you must be at so many meetings. Because, again, I sometimes I'll watch it and after the fact on Channel 20.
Sure.
That's my opinion, yeah.
Okay. And then I have a few questions. This is on page 80 regarding P-WAB and what they review and don't review. And I agree 100% that kind of changing CFAC's focus is a good idea. P-WAB reviewing the technical components, which I think you stated as being the quarterly report, as well, the language I'm kind of confused about, it says also at times reviewing change orders. And so, I'm wondering, that seems kind of squishy to me at times, so. And so I'm wondering, that seems kind of squishy to me at times, so do they review? To me, they should review all of them or none of them, frankly. Then there is the level of technical expertise in the, in the PWAAB, whether or not they're really qualified enough to review them, to be frank, because it is a highly detailed And in, put this in context, the next agenda item is a revised quarterly report from Corolla, which at first glance I like very much. My concern about having PWAAB or an advisory committee look at all the change orders is lessened if that report format goes forward and we build on that, frankly. So I'm a little unsure about that, frankly, whether we need to insist that PWAAB look at all change orders or not. What are your, what are your thoughts?
I mean, I think the, the smaller ones, you know, it's debatable. I think some of the larger ones we've experienced in the past with this project has been beneficial for staff and council, I think, to have that review. Sometimes we're not able to do it based on timing, but I think for the most part, we're able to hit that mark. So that's where, a little squishy just because sometimes things happen outside of that, that schedule, but we, we would prefer to go there, honestly.
So you're thinking the large ones?
Yeah.
The larger ones you would take to PWAAB?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and my thought about timing is frankly that the change orders need to be submitted on the owner's schedule, not
Sure. Yeah.
The others, their schedule. So
Right.
That needs to be set up in such a way that all large change orders get to PWAAB, in my opinion. Those are my questions on that. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Collins.
Thank you, sir. And I wanted, now I've lost the page. Okay. All right. And what page is it on here? 52 of, okay. Back to the question of, on the council procedures and policies, 50, no, what page is that? Okay, page 52, under council agenda reports. Page 52 of the overall agenda packet, 6.3, 0.2, 0.2. The city council will meet as determined necessary by the majority of council meters, council members with each of its advisory bodies or the chair of the advisory body. So it's in here, you, it's called out that you can meet with your advisory bodies as, at the pleasure of the full council. Of course, you can meet with them individual members as well on your own, but it's already in here. If you want to put more specificity around that, you certainly can, but your, your policies already call out the, that you can have those joint meetings.
What's your pleasure? Are you good? Good. Okay.
I'm good with it.
All right, good.
Good, thanks. Thank you, council member Heller. Any further questions, my, my fellow committee person? Okay. We'll go ahead and open up public comment. This is public comment for item C-3. Any member of the public wishing to come forward, do so now on item C-3. Seeing none, I'll go to Anthony. Do we have any public comment via telephone?
Thank you, Mayor. Currently, I do not see any raised hands in the queue.
Okay. I'll close public comment, bring it back to council, entertain discussion or emotion. Emotion. Emotion.
Oh, okay. I, I guess I could make a motion and then give me my comment.
Sure.
Okay. All right. Then I move that, shoot, I'm trying to get to the wording here. I move that we review, let's see here, that we adopt staff's recommendation, let's see here, so we have to go through one, two and three, correct? Okay. So adopt resolution number 38-22 amending the city council policies and procedures. And number two, adopt resolution number 39-22 amending the advisory bodies handbook and bylaws. And number three, direct the Public Works Advisory Board to review the WRF quarterly report and to the extent possible, contract amendments related to the WRF project. I guess I need to read this whole thing, huh? The Citizens Finance Advisory Committee's role related to WRF review will continue to include the following as directed by council in December 2020. Number one, review debt service recommendations from staff, including use of cash versus other funding sources and analysis of impacts on rates. Number two, review of cash flow performance to ensure we maximize the use of funds, time use of money. And number three, monitor compliance with draw, drawdown requirements for WFI and WRF funding. Second?
Motion by council member Ford for the staff recommendation, second by council member Addis. And any further discussion?
I, I have some comments.
Yes, please.
I want to start with, I appreciate the refresher course. You know, it's great to re, reread all of this and, you know, it's always great to reread this sort of thing and, and to remember. And then also, I appreciate staff reaching out to our various boards and our commission, our planning commission to also offer, you know, notification that we were going to review this tonight and to give them the opportunity to comment. I don't know if we received any, but, but I think it's great that they were given that notification because it's important if anyone has any burning, you know, things that are in that handbook that they really wanted to get to, you know, get to you, they would have done that, I think. And then the other comment that I have is regarding, on page 12, let me get to that really quick. It originally was kind of a question, but then I think it's more of a comment because when I was reading through this, when it talks about questions to staff on, yeah, on page 12, it reads, "A council member shall, after recognition by the presiding officer, address questions to the designated staff member. Questions shall be limited to the specific agenda item being considered." And it says, this last sentence really stuck out to me, and this is something that I remember reading when I was on planning commission, is that council members are encouraged to provide questions to staff prior to meetings. And the reason I brought this up is because, you know, often we're, we're told we don't ask a lot of questions during the council meeting, and yes, I think some questions are important to re-say, you know, restate during a council meeting, but I think it's important for our public to know that a lot of our burning questions when it comes to these items that come to us in these packets are asked to our staff members prior to the meeting and that our homework is being done. But what I think is amazing is that our staff is incredibly, very responsive and very reactive when it comes to comments from, at least in my own short time on staff, that our staff has really taken into consideration things that I've brought to them prior to meetings and, and then they are, you know, they're brought up during the meeting in their reports. And so I think that it's important that council members do both, you know, that there's questions that do come up on the fly or questions that we feel maybe that, you know, that, that are constituents really should hear from us as well. But I think it was just really important to point out that, that we are encouraged to ask a lot of our questions prior to meetings. So that's really, other than a huge thank you to our committee that's gone, you know, with a fine-tooth comb and read all of this and did such a great job. So, thank you.
It's worth the pay.
I have one more comment if I could.
Council member Heller, please.
Yeah, in response to your comments, council member Ford, I, I agree with you said that obviously we do a lot of homework. I guess the way I interpret that passage is that we should talk to staff about it in advance and kind of prepare them to answer them, but I, I think it's really important as council members to ask all the questions that we have so the public will hear the questions and the answers, and we represent the public in that way. But I think it is good to talk to staff first so they can prepare the answer as opposed to trying to catch them all off-guard all the time, which is I like to do, which is kind of something I need to stop. So anyway, those are my comments.
Hey, thanks for being honest. We appreciate that. Thanks, council member Heller. Any other comments? Appreciate it. Great, great comments, great observations. We all have our own way of doing it. You know, when I ask questions, I do it purposely to try to expose things for the public that I think are important. I don't ask all the questions I may have, but I do try to, to point out the salient issues that I think they need to hear. And 95% of the time, I know the answer to it, and I think that's what you're saying, but that's okay. That's part of our jobs in terms of letting the public know and, and giving them the information they require. So, good, good discussion. With that, we'll go ahead and ask for a roll call vote.
Council member Addis?
Yes.
Council member Ford?
Yes.
Council member Heller?
Yes.
Council member Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Item C-4 on our business agenda is the Water Reclamation Facility Program Quarterly Report Draft Format. We're not receiving a WRF report tonight. This is the, the format for the report. Council originally, several years ago, approved a rather lengthy document, and council member Heller in our WRF subcommittee suggested that there could be some refinements that might be more appropriate for the public, and we went through a process of vetting that. Staff was really helpful in doing that. I appreciate you, Greg, and, and all of the work that you did and council member Heller working with you and you, with Greg on that. I appreciate that as well, and so just wanted to open that up and say thank you for that and turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to reiterate your comments, I do appreciate the feedback that staff received from the WRF Subcommittee and other members of the public about the WRF quarterly report. Paul Amico will give a very short verbal presentation about what this new format includes. And just, just as a general comment, we did approach this revision to the WRF quarterly report as one that helps readability and accessibility for the general public. So I'll, I'll give it to Mr. Amico.
Thank you, Public Works Director Qualick, Mayor, council and community members. And I want to say as a member of the program team and now in leading that team, council member Heller, thank you for providing us with a bit of relief in what was a lengthy report to prepare and, and consumed quite a bit of time on our part. And we know that oftentimes these reports, people don't read every word, so thank you on that. So again, this was, this was a request that was made a while back and, and through time, we've, we've, we've tried to meet the intent of the, the different questions that we get with the quarterly report and adding content. And as you, as you all know, that became a very large and, and in some cases unreadable document. So with this revision, we are aiming to produce a plain language, high-level summary of, in the report that would contain an executive summary first, that would be a one-page at a glance, what did we accomplish in the quarter? How do we stand on budget, again, from a very high level? And then what are the major challenges that the program team is facing? So executive summary, very concise and, and again, very plain language. And then we would go into the, the different components of the WRF program, which include the facility itself, conveyance facilities, and then the recycled water component. Each one of those sections would, would be the same format, the same template for each. It will contain budget information for each one of the components, description again of, of accomplishments and challenges around each one of those components, and then contain a schedule or a Gantt chart that shows the critical path. What are we really focusing on as a, as a program team in trying to drive the schedule and make sure that those critical path activities stay on schedule so that we can meet, so we can accomplish and complete the project within the schedule that we've, we've established for each one of those? A lot of the technical information, a lot of the data and detail will be moved to appendix, appendices where appropriate, where we would provide the backup information. So anyone that's curious about that information can go then and then find it. They don't have to wade through the entire report to get to it. And for that, I could take any further questions.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate that. And I'll open it up to council questions. Council member Barton, any questions?
I, I don't have any questions. What I was impressed with was how you had managed to simplify this so that it's a much easier read. I think it's going to be a good change.
We agree. Thank you.
Council member Ford, any questions?
I do not have any questions.
Okay. Council member Addis?
No, but I want to commend council member Heller because I think in our, one of our very first meetings, you were asking for this kind of revision, council member Heller, and, and here it's come to fruition, and I've, I've always agreed, and so I appreciate the work that your team has put together, Paul, as well, to make this simpler and more photos and I think just better understood by the general public. So thank you to both.
Council member Heller?
Yeah, so Paul, do you think you have enough information with the format that you've shown us to, to put together the complete report for the next quarter?
We do.
Do you've got enough direction on that?
We do.
Okay. And then I wanted to ask Ms. Johnson-Rios and Mr. Collins if you think this format will work for you, because obviously you want to get into those numbers, they'll be in appendices. Without having seen that, I don't know if you can even answer the question, but I want to make sure that it works for you, and I think the numbers will be there for CFAC. And assuming that all of their information is there that you need, do you think it'll work for you without having seen it?
I mean, we worked, worked with Paul and Greg on it, and I think it's, it's an improvement. The appendices will still be there for the, for the fans out, out in the, the community who really like to dig in, including ourselves. So it's a little bit more to review because you still have the appendices and then the, the really shorthand for, for regular folks who don't have time to review something for over an hour at a given time. So, yeah, but I think it's worthy so that there's that summary data upfront and, and also the narrative that I think you really drove home in clearer, you know, plain English in one page. So people literally only have one minute can decipher what's going on.
Well, I want, I want to make sure that we haven't
Yeah.
Stripped it down so much that you don't have what you need
Absolutely, yeah. We, we, we still dedicate a good amount of time to add, looking at it. And of course, as you know, I mean, that, it's in arrears, it's a month and a half, you know, so we're, we're already, we're already moved on, but it's still really good historical data to have when we share it with the advisory bodies and council.
Okay.
Yeah. We feel good about it. Thank you.
Those are my questions.
Great. And I did have one CFAC member that, I don't know if wrote to everybody, but wrote to me about considering the importance of three, from the old report, three, section three. I, I should have brought a copy of it for you, I'm sorry. Anyway,
I didn't get that.
I don't necessarily feel the need to add it, but, because I think what we've got is, covers it, but I just want to make that known.
Yeah, we, we haven't removed any information, we've just moved, moved it
Moved it over.
Yeah, moved it to appendices.
Okay. Great. So with that, I'll go ahead and open up, did I open up public comment yet? Yeah, no. Public comment on item C-4. Any member of the public wishing to come forward on that? Please do so now, please. Seeing no public comment. Anthony, do we have any phone calls?
Thank you, Mayor. Currently, I do not see any raised hands in the queue.
All right. I'll close public comment, bring it back to the council, and perhaps council member Heller might want to make a motion. I don't know.
I would like a motion, but first I'd like to make a comment or two about this. This has been a long time coming and appreciate all the work by Corolla and city staff to get us here. Mr. Qualick's done an outstanding job of bringing it across the finish line, I think. My, my driving point behind this is not that I don't have time to read these reports. I do, and I read every word, but I really believe that reports even on highly technical projects should be easily understandable by any council member and any member of the public who's interested. And that's, that's been my drive from the beginning. I wish it had happened sooner, but at least it's happened now. And for the rest of the project, I hope there'll be more clarity on the part of the public and those of us up here on what's happening with the projects. So thank you all for making that happen. And I would like to move approval of item C-4. The staff recommended city council provide feedback, approve the draft format of the WR program quarterly report.
I'll second. Any further comments or discussion?
I'd like to make a comment now.
Yes, please.
I want to also thank council member Heller and staff for redeveloping this report as a newbie. When I got the first report, I was like, wow, this is a lot, right? But, you know, putting it in layman's terms really does help. You know, I'm excited to see the new format in, in action when it does come before us, if it does pass tonight. But I also want to point out that I think this falls, you know, this could almost fall under, you know, our DEI, our diversity, equity and inclusion action, is that this is more an accessible report for people to understand that don't have to be an expert in, in this area. And so to be accessible to people and for anyone to be able to hopefully understand what they're reading when they, when they see this report, because this is such a huge project for our city, as we all know. And many people want to talk about it and they want to know what's happening, and then when they see that other report, it's like, okay. want to know what's happening. And then when they see that other report, it's like, okay, what, what, I don't, you know. But this sort of report might actually help clarify what is exactly happening right now. And, and I think that's important. So, I think it's important for this specific topic, but I also think it's great that we are more, we're, we're keeping that in mind and we're more accessible to our, our citizens here. So, thank you for that. So, yeah, I'm, I'm excited to, to vote.
Well, good. And that's a great point. Thank you for bringing that up. I appreciate that. And thank you, Mr. Qualick. Again, you're going to get tired of hearing it, but thanks for pulling it away from Collins and taking it over. He's, he's got, no, I'm not saying, he's got lots going on. And we have a new great resource at Public Works that this is building you up. Who hired you, by the way? Mr. Collins did. So, I just want to say thanks for working with Councilmember Heller and then bringing it to the Subcommittee. And Jeff, thank you again for all your input on that and getting us to, to the point that we are tonight. So, with that, we'll go ahead and call for a real call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Thank you. That brings us to item D, Council Declaration of Future Agenda Items. Any burning issues? I'll tell you, we have a heck of a schedule coming in the next three meetings. But if you have something that's extremely important.
I have a burning issue.
Yes, burning.
It's called 3300 Panorama Drive. So, there's been some public comment about wanting a study session to inform the public about the project. And is that something that we can do fairly soon? My concern is that the, and I think the public feels this way, that they're kind of left out of the process until almost it's too late. For instance, what was shown at the community meeting last week was a plan that had been worked out with our community development partner, department, and the developer that included some easing of development standards in exchange for public benefits. I know, for example, that the planning commission is highly involved and energized around public benefits. I'm concerned about anything going forward further without the public in that neighborhood who has rightfully concerned that they're involved and, and they understand fully the process that this project will go through. So, I, I'd like to see if there's support to have a study session, I don't know, within 30 days if possible, if, if that's reasonable for staff to put that together. And again, it would mostly be an explanation from Mr. Graham's department about the process. This is what happens, about how long it's going to take. If you're a resident, you can put comments in here, you know what I'm saying? Otherwise, you just have a bunch of angry people who don't understand how they can have an impact on this. So, that's my intent.
Yeah, thank you. And that was why I opened my comments today with regard to that, saying, just, just for clarification, and Chris can chime in if, if he wants, because we'll be the body that eventually will see it, it would be inappropriate for the council to hold that study session and have the full body council there before we heard it. So, it would be a staff-led study session to talk about the process. And Chris, I don't know if you want to chime in and just talk about that.
Sure. So, a study session could take two forums generally. It could be a city council special meeting or it could be a staff-led meeting. The problem with having a city council special meeting on this before the permits that the council will be reviewing comes to them, is that council weighing in or offering opinions could prejudice the decision-makers before they have all the information before them. I'd recommend that if there is going to be a study session, that it be staff-led, because the city council and the planning commission, they will be making decisions on a number of these items. There's a conditional use permit, a CDP. There's going to be a vesting tentative, vesting tract map. There's going to be SEQA. And so, to protect the city, I would suggest that it not be actually Brown Act bodies that lead the meeting. But that being said, you know, I could defer to Director Graham or City Manager Collins on whether a staff-led study session, that explains the process more, you know, is on the table.
Yeah, I think, I always envisioned it staff-led.
Okay.
But can council members and planning commission members attend and ask questions?
Not if, well, I'll let you answer, but if three are present, that's a serial meeting.
If you ask a question.
If three members are present in the audience. Chris, I'll let you. You're the expert.
I, I would suggest that there isn't a quorum of either of the Brown Act bodies that are present and asking questions, because what can happen is that down the road, if the developer is not satisfied with the decisions that are made by the Brown Act bodies, if there is potential evidence of predetermination or a meeting occurring undercover of a special study session and Q and A, then it exposes the city to potential litigation for a court changing the decision of the Brown Act body. So, in short, it exposes the city to problems down the line and potentially could lead to Brown Act members having to recuse themselves.
Right.
And the last thing I would want to see happen is a planning commissioner or a council member being advised to step down and not make that decision because they publicly stated a position before all the facts were before them and they were being asked to make a decision on the permits.
So, two members could attend, right?
Yes.
But not ask questions? Does that, does that, how would it have to work?
Yeah, the, two members could show up. It'd probably be better if, the safe, the most prudent route would be to not have Brown Act members present.
No.
You know, not asking questions. The concern is just that if the developer's unhappy with decisions that are made down the line, then potentially they will review the tapes of all of these meetings. And there might be reasons for them to go to court on that. The Brown Act bodies made decisions before it came before them.
So, if we had no Brown Act people there, we could still review the tapes later?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay.
And this is, this is just an abundance of caution and prudence that I'm suggesting this.
No, no. We don't want anyone to have to accuse themselves on something this important.
Right, yeah. And, and let me just ask Mr. Graham, given the lengthy process I described in the beginning, when would you think, I know we have people biting at the bit, but, and, and it's more process information, but how would you feel? What are your, what's your timeline? What do you think?
So, couple of questions. One for Councilmember Heller. He, he just said tapes. That leads me to believe that the desire potentially by the council is that we have the meeting taped, means we, meaning we would have to set that up. So, there's probably some time involved in, in making that happen. Secondly, to answer your question, Mayor, or to get it, what you were talking about. So, largely, this, this type of meeting would be to explain the general process this project's going through, or just any projects would go through under this circumstance, meaning like a subdivision. Because where the project stands right now is, the project application is incomplete. We don't have most of the information related to the project. So, we wouldn't be talking about the project itself. And because it'd be very premature to do so, because we don't have finalized plans and environmental documents, anything like that. But we would be able to go over what the, the process, the project's going to, you know, go through. The, the hearing process that it's going to go through, it'll go to planning commission, and it goes to city council, that type of thing would be the, the, the topic of conversation really, is, you know, how we process those types of applications, what's involved with it, the types of permits, that type of thing.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying. I guess it's important, I think, to the public that they understand how that first presentation came about. Because in a note to me, you said there were developmental standards that were relieved, or whatever the right word is, in exchange for public benefit. So, that's a negotiation that I think the public needs to know about. So, I think that's a good place to start. And then you could talk through the, the rest of the process and how it might go. I think it's, the key thing is that the public...
I, I'm sorry. I don't, I don't want to think I'm muzzling you, but I just want to stay on topic because...
What, this is the topic, isn't it?
Go ahead.
This is my future agenda item.
Okay. I won't support it. I just, I won't support it.
Okay. So, my thought is, Mr. Graham, to continue, that you talk about this, what's been proposed so far, so the community understands what they were looking at last week. And then go through the steps through the rest of the way and explain how and when they can have input into a project like this one. Does that make sense? Does that...
I, I mean, I think I would sort of stick to what I was saying before, is I, I would want to focus, have the, the focus of the, of the, of the meeting be the project, because the project isn't well-developed at this point. I mean, I would be happy to go over like why we had the previous meeting and what the project is in general, but it would really be more process-oriented at this point, just because the, the project is, again, not well-developed and we don't have most of the information associated with it to make it what the project will eventually be. But the good...
I'm not asking for that. I'm asking for an explanation of what was presented and how you got to that point. And then after that, you can talk in general terms about how projects like this...
So, now we're giving direction on exactly what's supposed to happen for the meeting. And so, perhaps the right thing to do would be, because my sense is what you're going to get, are people going to show up and they're going to want specifics on the project? And the direction we've given is come back with a program or an information session that deals with, for any generic project, what the process is and when you can weigh in. And so, perhaps in order for me to support it, we could ask Mr. Graham to come back with what that might look like from a content standpoint.
Well, I disagree with that.
Okay.
I really think the public deserves an answer to the questions they had last week about the project that was presented.
If I could.
The city owes that to them, frankly.
If I could. So, I think we can have it both ways. There was a, questions were submitted to the developer who hosted the meeting. It wasn't the city who hosted the meeting. And that was on the behest and urging of Scott Graham, because he understands how sensitive this is to the community up there, who had issues with how the developer handled the tank demolition project, was not done well, not communicated well, and I think created a lot of distrust, rightfully so, with those neighbors. So, we're trying to rebuild that. We've urged the developer to build the relationship with them. This is their project, not our project. It's their private property, not our property. We have a process that we follow. It's guided by the state, not us. So, we need to follow that. We need to make sure we don't violate that. So, I think we're on the right course of getting these folks in front of our community members who are concerned. They're the ones who are going to have to defend this project, not us. But we can explain to the community what a process looks like, how we derive benefit for the community, you know, what that's based upon, by impact, what the exact type of process is going to look at. Get to the questions about landslides and those kind of things, because that's what an environmental review actually does. Those exact things that people came up to talk to us about today is what your environmental review process handles. They can have more meetings with the public, you know, where they, they get in their face and ask, what are you trying to accomplish here? How are you going to handle these issues? That's for the developer to handle. And then we go through our regular process, but we can convey that information to the members of the public who can attend those meetings through the FAQ document that could live on the website. But I don't think it's prudent for the city to get in front of, this is a developer's project. This is for them to defend, not for us. But we can check, we can explain the process to our community members in a much better way than we have in the past. So, I think we can have it both ways. We can have that meeting, it's a general discussion, and then we have an FAQ that lives on the city website related to the project. And that's really, again, for the developer to defend, not us. That's...
And I would support what you have just outlined, and that was my intent in my opening comments this evening, if that makes sense to you, Mr. Graham.
Yes, Mayor. And Councilmember Heller, I, I do think I understand a little bit of what you're getting at and, and why you're asking what you're asking. Certainly, as, as part of this process, we can under, we, we can explain the plan development process, which is what you were getting at. We can absolutely do that. That would apply to any project in a planned development zone, and it makes perfect sense. Also, we are expecting to get back a list of the questions that were submitted to RRM at that meeting. And it is our intent, on the staff side of things, as, as City Manager Collins indicated, to kind of create a, a frequently asked questions, for lack of a better term, paper that would answer a lot of the questions that were, were posed at that meeting. And that would live on the website, so anybody can go there and look at it, just like the, the project application materials. As we get them, we're posting them on there, because that, the neighborhood is very interested in the project. We know that. And we're trying to make that information available to them as, as soon as we, as we get it, so.
Well, I think that the FAQ is a good idea. I think you and I talked about it. I like that idea much, a lot. But I do think that, that we have to go above and beyond in the community outreach for this particular project because of its location and its potential impact on, on North Morro Bay. So, I'm not, I'm not going to die on this hill whether you talk specifically about this project, but I think that's what the community deserves and what they're asking for. The main thing, the study session, go ahead and we'll see how it works.
And Councilmember Heller, as a matter of transparency along that theme, if the public isn't aware of the fact, there are quite a few documents on the city website. I'm sure a lot of residents have already looked at it, but for those who don't know, you know, the documents the city has that are public are there.
There, there's a ton on the website, but I know a lot of residents who are unhappy and going to be impacted will never look at them.
Sure.
So, I'm trying to go the extra mile, because I think they deserve it. This is not just a house that's getting built somewhere. This will have an impact on North Morro Bay for generations, and public needs to be involved.
Right. And, and I don't know if a council direction is needed. I mean, I, I think it's, what I'm hearing, different variations of the same theme, that this is, it's important to conduct this information to our community. So, we don't need a council meeting to do that.
Right.
It could be a staff-led thing, where we put our heads together, Scott and I, and take the input we heard from tonight, and we're all raising really important points. And I think we can find the middle ground. And we're not going to be the reception, it's not a, a meeting for us to get yelled at. That's not the point of the meeting.
No.
And, and it's a way to just, hey, you know, like, we hear your passion. We hear that. And here's how you can direct it. Here's the process. Here's how you can engage, you know? And, and we're not telling you you're wrong, and we're not telling you you're right either, but this is how you can participate in your, your process.
Right. Absolutely.
In a generic fashion, for any project.
So, we can do that. I, I would hesitate to say we could do it next month, because it's the budget process, but I think in early June, we could, we can get something like that going.
Are you feeling comfortable that you're, you have enough direction? And are you okay with their feedback?
Uh, yeah, I'm okay with what's been discussed.
Okay.
I would like though, I'd be videoed. I mean, I emailed the developer, RRM, whoever emailed us that the meeting was happening and asked them, like, is it going to be on Zoom? How do we watch this thing? They said, no, we can't do that. And I think it was prob, I do think it was problematic, that it was a one-off, that you could only find out if you were in person. And I know that's not staff's fault at all. But I, I would like to request, moving forward, if there is any kind of special meeting, that it's held in a way where more people can engage in that from home via Zoom and that, you know, provides us a recording. And I think it would be helpful for this body if we were able to access it in a different way, rather than showing up. And would love that anybody who is talking to the developer convey how important it is and how this body has been working on DEI and more access for the public and that to move, you know, to move their project through this community, that access is incredibly important. Access to information is, is incredibly important. And I think it was a little bit of a stumbling block, actually, on their part, that they didn't go the extra mile to provide that for the community. I think it would have cleared up a lot of the kind of miscommunication that's going on around this, around, you know, who's responsible for what and how does it move forward and what the process is. So, I'd love to have, just to have that kind of open access. However this plays out, I love the FAQ document, but there's, you know, why read the book if you can watch the movie? So, I think there's power in that.
Can I ask a question? How the residents were notified? Like, I don't, I'm just curious.
Well, there's a, a very engaged group that lives in that area. And so, Scott, Scott Graham's developed a relationship with these folks. And I'm sure there was other ways, methods, or means of getting the word out, but it was kind of hyper-focused on, on the areas where we've, we've heard concerns about the tank demo project. And a lot of people reacted to that and got in touch with us. And so, we've maintained that email list. So, that was the primary effort, was through them. And those folks have a really good network and, and share information. So, I think there was a pretty good turnout for all things considered.
And there was a notice in Stere Bay News. And didn't the city put something on a website? Or not?
Yeah, we did post the notice.
Yeah.
And then we did the notify, for people that were signed up for the panorama, take project site in general.
Notify me.
Yeah, we, yeah, notify me. We sent that, we sent that out, too.
Okay. So, that similar process would be used as well to let them know?
Yeah. And I think we, we'll have to figure out, think about timing with other meetings, but try to have it so it can be recorded, you know, and put on the website, so people can come back to that for other projects as well.
Okay.
All right. Good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. The meeting is adjourned. The next regular meeting of the Morro Bay City Council will be held on Tuesday, May 10th, 2022, 5:30 PM, right here in the Vets Hall. Thank you. Good evening. Be safe and be well. Thank you for the privilege of your time. Thank you for the privilege of your time.